Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 24th, 2018. If you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rodriguez, good evening. Could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Mayor Fox.
Here.
Item four is request for a continuance of any public hearing or agenda item. I don't believe staff has asked for any continuance, so hearing none. We have one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Item 7H has been asked to be continued. Is that to a day certain, or is that open? Open. All right. City Manager indicates open. So that'll be the order without objection. And we'll move into item five, that's special presentations. Tonight, we have a special presentation I'd like to invite to the podium, Mr. Eric Sternad, who's the Executive Director of Interface Children and Family Services. They're going to provide the 211 Annual Report to the City of Thousand Oaks. Good evening, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fox, Council, and City Manager Powers. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you about 211 Ventura, a service that is really benefiting our entire county. And we're very grateful to be able to come and report out to you on the results from our latest annual report for 2017. And we really appreciate the city's support alongside others to make this possible. So, next slide, please. So, what we'd like to really get across tonight is that 211 is now available by phone, of course, the three-digit 211 number, for access to any health and human service information across our whole county. That's public and private services. But we're also accessible now 24 hours a day via text. So by texting your zip code into 898-211, anyone can reach our staff, and we can have a two-way text conversation, which many people are wanting to do these days over a call. And of course, we can also be reached online at 211ventura.org, and the public can search themselves for any, again, any health and human service that they're looking for across our whole community. Next slide, please. So, new services that we opened up in this last year, and again, I'm sorry, the public can view this report on the 211ventura.org website. Just navigate to Reports, and you can view this report since we publish our annual reports there. New this last year, we're doing homeless management information systems entry. So we're helping our county partners and other providers by entering data in about homeless individuals who are calling. That helps us to better serve and draw down dollars, federal dollars and state dollars, to support the work that needs to be done for homeless in our communities. We're also screening for benefit, benefits. That's in partnership with United Way Ventura County and Gold Coast Health Plan. You'll see here just a pie chart that shows the funding sources. So the County of Ventura is about 32% of our funding. Cumulatively, the cities that are contributing, including Thousand Oaks, and again, thank you for your support, 24%. First five of Ventura County, 24%, then United Way Ventura County, 15%, and then some others at 5%. So that's how the 211 service is funded. Want to talk a little bit about the Thomas Fire. Of course, this was, has been a huge event for our entire community, and 211s are being used increasingly across the country to respond with information during public disasters. So when the fire broke out on the 4th, on the 5th, we received 87% greater call volume than the day before. We answered 400 unique texts, folks looking urgently for information as that disaster was unfolding. Altogether, in the entire event, we responded to about 7,800 calls and about 10,000 texts between the two counties involved, ours and Santa Barbara. We do answer calls for 17 California counties outside of our own in contract. So that really gives us quite a robust staffing that we fully utilize for our own disaster response needs here. And that's kind of the great thing about, about the sharing that we do with other counties for this resource. Next slide, we'll show you the, it's hard to read on the screen, but in the orange are the Santa Barbara calls, and the blue are the Ventura calls, and then texts down at the bottom. And the Santa Barbara Office of Emergency Services uses our 211 more directly, and they actually send the public to us directly. Our county OES here uses 211 in more of a backup capacity, and so we're happy to serve in that way. The next slide will show that we actually, our call center here, out of the Interface Office in Camarillo, helped out in responses to all of the string of national disasters that have happened over the last six, seven months. Hurricane Irma, Harvey, the Las Vegas Mass shooting, the Northern California wildfires, and then, of course, our own. And by doing that, then we are part of really a national network of 211s that are supporting each other. And we want that because in the event that there is a major disaster like an earthquake that really overwhelms the capacity of California 211s, then other 211s will in turn come to our rescue and help us to get critical information that is vetted by Office of Emergency Services locally here. That's the only information we give out, and help us to get that out to the public. We do want to thank the Ventura County Community Foundation for funding a generator to keep our 211 running even in the, in the situation where we had no power for a while. And they have given us grant funds to actually purchase a generator, a permanent generator, which we'll be installing in the next few months. And that will assure that 211 always has backup power to be able to, to serve the community's needs. Next slide, please. Let's skip that one. That's, just talks about some stories of what people kind of went through during the fire. So you can see that in the report. The next slide talks about the fact that we do take crisis calls in 211. 211 is made for folks looking for housing, or food, or counseling resources, or legal resources. But we do actually get active emergency calls. So these would be active suicide calls, or domestic violence, or rape crisis, child abuse calls. And so, of course, we're, we're working closely with our partners, law enforcement sometimes, if it's, if it's an imminent emergency situation, to get them to help that, that they need. The call volume over 17 compared to 16, pretty similar, a little bit of drop-off, but that's happening nationally. And again, we're seeing some of that transition over to texting as, as a kind of a response that folks want to have. So the next slide will give you some information about kind of the demographic breakdown. So about 3/4 female to male callers. Most callers are in the 30 to 54 age range. And you'll see there's a variety of ethnicities from callers. We do have the capacity to respond in any language. We have a language line that gives us the capacity to respond in 150 languages if, if needed. Interesting to see how people found out about 211. So far and away, the largest entities that are referring folks to 211 are actually other nonprofit agencies. So this is, this is because 211 really is part of the infrastructure for how nonprofits are running and how services are delivered to the community. Second to that are friends and family, which tells us, again, that folks are having a good experience with 211, and they're referring us to, to loved ones for support. So, so again, the, the texting is, is new for, for us in this last year. We're the only 211 that's, that's providing 24-hour texting across the state of California, which is, which is great. We had about 1,300 TO residents call last year, and just maybe 65 or so text us. Now, when you look, when you add in the, the texts that came in through the fire, that would jump up to about 800. So definitely, folks were using that text capacity that we, that we had during a fire. And the way that that works is if there is an incident, then what we put out is a keyword. In this case, it was "Thomas Fire," or "Fuego Tomas" for a Spanish-language version of that communication. And then, anyone who texts into that can then get priority push texts from us. So as the resources come out, then we can turn around and send a text message to those who told us that they were interested. So, as far as the, the reasons why folks are contacting 211, you'll see in the, in the separate handout that I gave you, that, that the City of Thousand Oaks does track the county needs fairly accurately. Although, the requests for housing, which is the number one need that folks are searching for, was about 4% higher in TO than in the county altogether. Requests for mental health and addiction support, just 1% higher. So just, pretty much tracks the same. And, and the rest track fairly, fairly close, other than income needs requests, which is about 5% lower than the rest of the county. So, we do, we do track unmet needs, what we call unmet needs. And these are things that folks are looking for but can't get in the community. And housing, emergency shelter in particular, is always the top unmet need. About 24% of folks who tell us that they weren't able to get what they were looking for, were looking for emergency housing. And so there's a list in the, in the report about that. We do follow-up calls to callers. We do a sampling method where we're calling back 2%. And we're asking them what their experience of 211 was, and then also, what were those unmet needs, so that we can categorize that and bring that back to you and other policymakers, so that you have a sense about what the community's asking for, but are, but they're having a hard time finding in our community. So again, on behalf of the 30 or so staff that are working day and night in, out of our Camarillo office at Interface, we really appreciate your support of 211. And hopefully, we won't have another disaster like that anytime soon. But if we do, please know that your 211 here, and 211s across the state and the country, will really be backing this community up. And that's, that's kind of a comfort for us. And we are really happy to, to partner with first responders in the tremendous work that they were doing. So thank you for the time, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Move to item seven. That's our consent calendar. Any items Council would like called special.
Public comment.
All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Mayor.
Oh. Mr. Adam.
Yeah, I was going to move the consent calendar. There's nothing to be polled?
Public comment.
Or comments?
Public comment.
Oh, we have a public comment?
My bad. Okay. So we'll get to cons, you know what? Let's just handle the consent calendar, and then we'll go back to public comment.
Do, is something to be polled, or do we have a public comment?
Okay. City Attorney says do that. Okay, very good. All right. Item six. Madam Clerk, could you call public comment, please?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda, or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the Council as a whole, and all documents for City Council and the official record should be presented to the City Clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the Council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the City Manager for administrative follow-up. 24 individuals have presented cards. And pursuant to Council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our first speaker is Thomas Adams, followed by Robert Hotson. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Always a pleasure. Last council meeting, there were about a dozen of us who spoke out on SB 54, asking the Thousand Oaks Council to opt out of SB 54. And the response has been so far somewhat dismissive, to be honest. To paraphrase a response, it was that "Thousand Oaks is okay, so we're going to do the status quo." All due respect, but the question was not, "Is Thousand Oaks okay?" The question is, "Are you going to uphold the Constitution? Are we going to do what's right and protect the citizens of Thousand Oaks?" We understand that your decisions are difficult, and we, and sometimes controversial. Then again, that's the gig you signed up for. We also understand that if it does get on the docket, it may not go our way. We understand the process. However, you serve at the consent of the people. And the people are asking that this make the docket, that this come up to, to a vote and be faced by the City Council. As you've seen by news, this has come up in many cities and many counties recently. We wish, we, the people of Thousand Oaks, wish to be heard on this. We feel as though last week, we were heard, but not listened to. So, you know, we're going to persist and come in until we're listened to. And there are several avenues we can take to try to press the issue. But we're hoping that the Council will, will listen to us and ultimately put an SB 54 opt-out on the docket. When AG Sessions came into California and filed suit with California, it opened up an interesting door for us. It's a stay of enforcement. To put forth a stay of enforcement is not radical. It's not wagging a finger in the face of Sacramento. It's simply saying, while the state and the federal government have a dispute, we are going to default to the way things were before, and to default to the United States Constitution, as is the oath all of you took. So once again, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, we respectfully ask that you add an SB 54 opt-out, opt-out, or stay of enforcement, add it to the docket in sometime in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Robert Hotson, followed by Margarita Asal. Good evening, sir.
Evening. Robert Hotson, 41-year resident of Thousand Oaks. Two weeks ago at the City Council meeting, a couple of dozen of us spoke or submitted comments about opposition for SB 54, and joined the ever-increasing number of cities and counties opting out of the sanctuary state. At the end of the public comments, City Manager, Mr. Powers, tried to allay our safety concerns, saying, "Police Chief Tim Hegel assures us that SB 54 is not hindering our ability to keep Thousand Oaks safe. But my safety concerns are not allayed. I understand the argument about not inquiring into the immigration status of immigrants, illegal immigrants, that are reporting a crime or being a witness to a crime. Understand that might make our city safer, but that's not what SB 54 and the sanctuary state's about. SB 54 is the deportation of criminal aliens having served time for one of the 600 or 800 serious or violent crimes." So first, there's a danger in the ICE roundups of going out into the neighborhoods and picking up the people, because the ICE still got to have a job to do. And those deportable aliens, an ICE raid could go bad. So there's, there's inherent danger there. And then, secondly, the recidivism rate of the crimes committed by deportable aliens is terrifying. Here's just a couple of studies. Congressional Research Service using subpoena data from the House Judiciary Committee, over two-and-a-half-year period, more than 26,000 deportable aliens were charged with 58,000 new crimes. A GAO report in 2003 said 52,000, 55,322 illegal aliens were rearrested. A GAO study in 2011, not sure what the time period was, but 251,000 criminal aliens were re-elected, were arrested. And a ICE report in 2013 said the recidivism rate of 36,000 criminal aliens released in 2013 was 50%. The California State Sheriff's Association, who's opposed SB 54 since the beginning, in March of this year, well after the, the law was passed, reiterated its concerns about recycling criminal aliens back into the public, thereby giving those who victimize our communities unnecessary opportunities to do more harm. And San Diego County just opted out of 54 just this past week, saying, "We are committed to putting our public safety first. We don't want to wait for an ICE raid to go bad, and we do not, and we do want to prevent the recidivist crimes committed by criminal aliens. And we sure, surely do not want another Kate Steinle incident." So I attempted to contact Mr. Powers and Commander Hegel to ask indeed how SB 54 is not hindering our ability to keep Thousand Oaks safe. To date, there has been no response. So I now ask that question in open public, in open session.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Margarita Asal, followed by David Asal.
Good evening. I'm Margarita Asal from Westlake Village. The citizens of 24 California cities and eight counties have joined the federal lawsuit against SB 54, which is unconstitutional, illegal, expensive, and a danger to communities. I respectfully ask this City Council, in solidarity with the citizens of this country, state, and community, to put SB 54 on your agenda. Uphold the Constitution of the greatest country in this world, the United States of America, and I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. David Asal, followed by Amy Chin. David Asal, followed by Amy Chin. Hey, folks, the applause is great, except that folks can't hear me call their names. So if we could just keep that in mind. I have a pretty loud voice, so I'm pretty sure it's not on this end. All right. Good evening, sir.
Hello. I'm David Asal from Westlake Village. And like the previous speakers, I respectfully request that the Council place SB 54 on the agenda, so that the issue can be debated and the voice of the people can be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amy Chin, followed by Mandy Jacob. Outstanding. Good job. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and Councilmembers. I would first like to thank you for your service to the City of TO. My name is Amy. I legally immigrated here and became a citizen of the United States, and am currently a resident of Westlake Village. To become a citizen, I had to take a naturalization oath of allegiance. The oath states, "I hereby declare on oath that I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of America." Likewise, when you took office, you took an oath, an oath very similar to the one I took, in which you solemnly swore to support and defend the Constitution of the United States. Our oaths are not meant to be taken lightly. It should be with strong conviction that we support and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States. This is why we are all here today. You and I cannot stand by and stay neutral. Staying neutral and ignoring the issue is not an option, because SB 54 conflicts with federal law and is therefore unconstitutional. Article 6 of the Constitution, also known as the Supremacy Clause, states, "This Constitution shall be the supreme law of the land." In other words, state governments and officials cannot take actions or pass laws that interfere with the Constitution and laws passed by Congress. SB 54 is therefore unconstitutional and makes it impossible for the City of Thousand Oaks to comply with both federal and state law. You can't sit on the fence on this issue. Ignoring the issue will not make it go away. Dismissing the concerns of your constituents will not make us go away. This is an important issue for us, your constituents. We have respect for the law, the process, and our mayor, and City Councilmembers. Please likewise respect us. Please do not dismiss our concerns with an excuse that this is not under your purview. You see, we are not asking you to write a whole new set of immigration laws for Thousand Oaks. That would not be under your purview. We are merely asking you to honor the oath of office you took, and take a stand to abide by the law of the United States. This is why we elected you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chin. Mandy Jacobs, followed by Michael Urbowski.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to reiterate, it sounds fantastic that all the same people are saying the same things here. So I don't want to be tedious. I wanted to say, two weeks ago, I thought you had a stellar crowd here. We came, we gave you financials, economics, we told you how we couldn't be supported, and that still didn't hit home. We didn't even get it on the agenda. And I agree, we felt like we were totally dismissed. We were told that the Ventura County Sheriff thought it wasn't a problem. Well, you know what? The LA County Sheriff thinks it's a huge problem. And there are lots of other counties that are following suit. So please take that into account. Secondly, I also wanted to say, I don't even know if you know about the Angels. Those are the people that have been killed by illegal immigrants. And they have a huge following now of the parents actually going, and the word, the word on the street is that they're trying to get legal action, not on the City Council, but on the City Council members. And I wanted to up the pressure just a little bit more. The, they're called Fight Sanctuary City. They have actually issued a brief that will pierce any form of sovereign immunity. So besides me appealing to your conscience to not be able to sleep at night, knowing that the blood would be on your hands, you also have a legal issue coming up now where you could be held personally responsible. So in two weeks, this is the crowd that has turned out, and I'm sure we're going to double it next week. So please put it on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Michael Urbowski, followed by Dwight Mohler. Good evening, sir.
Hello, my name is Michael Urbowski, and I'm from Newberry Park. The concern I have today is a controversial issue of SB 54. Before SB 54 was passed, California sheriffs said, quote, "If SB 54 passes, it'll allow dangerous, violent career criminals to slip through cracks and be released back into our communities." I did some research and found data that, from the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, an organization which provides federal payments to state and localities that incur correctional officers' salary costs for incarcerating undocumented criminal aliens with at least one felony or two misdemeanors. They provided a statistic that in 2009, 2009 alone, California had approximately 2,400 illegal aliens imprisoned in California for homicide and related offenses. To me, that's a lot of criminals that are at risk of slipping through the cracks and becoming, and releasing back into our communities. Is this City Council comfortable to have illegal immigrants back on our streets? I urge you to place SB 54 on the agenda for the next City Council meeting, and help make the City of Thousand Oaks a safe city for its citizens. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Dwight Mohler, followed by Janie Schmidt. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dwight Mohler, and I'm from Thousand Oaks, 20-some-odd-year resident. Just want to say, my father was an immigrant to the United States. When he came to the United States, he had to fully identify who he was. He had to show that he could earn unemployment, and he had to actually have a job to show that he had someplace to go. On top of that, he had to have somebody sign for him for full financial responsibility. So he just couldn't come in as we have right now. Immigrants are those folks that come here, they fully disclose who they are, and therefore, they're invited into this country. Aliens are not. We don't know who they are. We don't know their background. We don't know what they're going to do. Some of these folks, they violate our laws, and they end up in our jails. And yet, we have SB 54 by the state that's put the decision to you as far as, where is this community going to stand? Are we going to stand with the citizens and with our laws? Or are we going to simply take these folks, and when they complete their, their time in, in our custody, put them back out the community? That is the wrong move. Don't wait till somebody gets hurt. Your first role in government is to protect the citizens, and this is not protecting the citizens. Waiting till somebody gets hurt is the wrong move. I'm asking you, please consider what the city's stance is, give a clear message to our law enforcement of what we do, and it should be to work with our national and our federal law enforcement to keep us safe. Thank you.
Janie Schmidt, followed by Gail Hubs.
My name is Janie Schmidt. I'm a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm in Newberry Park. And I'm here to say that I'd like to see this SB 54 go before the Council, and consider how many of us feel strongly about not being, supporting fugitives. And I know the numbers that people have been giving are the people that have been caught. Just consider how many, how many illegals are here that have never been caught. And we don't need to do this. We need to know who is And we don't need to do this, we need to know who is in our community. We need to support not only our local police, but ICE, and see that these people are not part of our community. Anyway, I would appreciate very much if the council would consider having it on our agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
And God love our country.
Gail Hubs followed by Mary Gallegos.
Good evening, and thank you for the privilege of being able to speak to you guys tonight. It's an honor. I could say a lot of things, but I'm basically going to be repeating what everyone else has been saying, and I just stand in agreement, urging you guys to do the right thing, which we know is to put this on the agenda. Given all the stats you've heard and just understanding the pure unconstitutional nature of this, we must stand up against this. And so let's follow the lead of some of the wonderful counties in California that are moving and we're getting a momentum. Let's be another one that really stands for the right thing here and put it on the agenda. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Mary Gallegos followed by Michael Greer. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mary Gallegos. I've been a resident in this area for about 25 years, recently retired, and I just attended a meeting where I heard what had happened two weeks ago. And I was appalled, appalled at how our people were treated. I thought for sure if anyone would stand up to SB 54, it would be the city of Thousand Oaks, because you have shown leadership in these kinds of things before, and now I'm ashamed that you have not. It's time for you to reconsider. Do what the other cities and the other counties of California are doing. Follow federal law. We are American citizens. We should follow federal law. We set the example. We are the leaders. Do the right thing.
Michael Greer followed by Deborah Schrefler. Mr. Greer? How about Deborah Schrefler? Followed by Chase Rashid.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm not talking about SB 54. I'm Deborah Schrefler. I've been in the Thousand Oaks, Newberry Park area for nearly 30 years, and tonight I'm talking about Parental Alienation Awareness Day, which is tomorrow. It's an international day in which we're raising awareness about parental alienation. This is often found in the context of a contentious divorce. Parental alienation is when one alienating parent manipulates a child and their mind to sever the ties between the child and the target parent in order to destroy the target parent emotionally, financially, or both. When the pressure on the child to be loyal to the alienating parent becomes too great, the child gives up and totally rejects the target parent. It is domestic emotional violence against both the child and the target parent without the visual bruises. Some alienating behaviors include speaking negatively or lying about the target parent in front of the child, or interfering with communication and visitation, moving with the child and leaving no contact information, allowing children to make inappropriate decisions, such as if they even want to see the other parent, and discussing inappropriate information with the child, like details of the marriage, court proceedings, and financial matters. These behaviors can go as far as preventing essential school and medical information from getting to the target parent. Brainwashing and implanting of false memories are not unusual. The most common response of a child exposed to alienating behaviors is extreme resistance or contact with the target parent without any justifiable cause. Even children who have been removed by CPS because they've been physically abused still long for a relationship with that parent. Children have to carefully be taught to hate and reject a parent. Parental alienation is both painful and destructive. It takes advantage of a child's suggestibility and dependency and leaves the child feeling confused, frightened, and insecure, leaving deep and long-lasting emotional scars. It can result in the child's loss of a relationship with a previously loving, nurturing, and competent parent without permission to grieve. Research shows that children who have been alienated from a parent experience a greater percentage of depression, low self-esteem, dropout rates from school, suicidal ideation, serious mental disorders, drug and alcohol problems, and difficulties in their own relationships. For the sake of all children, to be able to give and receive all of the love they deserve, we urge you to learn more and share more about parental alienation by visiting these resources. Thank you. I'm going to leave copies of resources over there with my business cards if you have questions later. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Chase Rashid? Go ahead, go ahead, ma'am. Chase, Mr. Rashid, you can follow it. Or the other way around.
Thank you. Chase Rashid, city of Thousand Oaks. Now, I'm going to say something a little bit different, it's about SB 54. I wasn't going to say anything about this the last time that it came up, but I felt compelled to say something about this. Immigration is a federal issue. It's not something that the city deals with. Everybody knows that, that's just the way it is. Now, everyone has the right to feel the way about this bill that they want to, but it simply is not a city issue, and I would urge the city council not to take it up. You know, and when we think about what the city and the county would do to do ICE's job, that's going to cost money. That's not free. That is money that can go towards our roads and our other infrastructure. My street, there is sidewalk missing in several portions. Women roll strollers in the street with their children in them. And that's money that can be used toward that, that infrastructure, which is why I don't think immigration is, should be, a city issue. Yes, we need comprehensive immigration reform. Yes, we need that, but that's the duty of Congress. They had the opportunity to do it several years ago, they did not do it. They don't seem ready to do it right now. We need to leave this, this air of divisiveness, leave it, we need to let it go completely, but let's not bring it, drag it down to the local level. I don't feel that's appropriate when we have issues to deal with. We're dealing with land use issues. Measure E, the issue pertaining to that, is coming up tonight. Those are the things we need to deal with. And I realize I'm in the minority here, but you know what? I'm not afraid to speak up in a, you know, when I'm in the minority. And I'll just close like this. No human being is illegal. There are undocumented immigrants, and I hear the whispers, but no human being is illegal. So keep the human element in this. SB 54 allows people who are victims, undocumented people who are victims, to come forward to the police. Some of them are attacked, they are robbed and everything else, but they feel fear of coming forward to the police because they're afraid of ICE. Yes, we need comprehensive immigration reform. And the people who are violent criminals, the bill doesn't stop them from being turned over to ICE, absolutely not. So what I'll say is, keep the human element in it. Now, a lot of people are not going to like what I had to say, but it's a free country. We have free speech, and God bless America, no matter how you view this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rashid. Colleen Bush followed by Sandy Sauerman.
Mr. Mayor, we have Ms. Michael Greer, who was supposed to speak a couple of speakers.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you. I would like you to take up the issue of SB 54. The issue of immigration is all of our problems, local, state, and federal. We are all affected by it. It isn't, it isn't a matter of race, religion, or color of skin. It's a matter of a rule of law. And if there's anything that upsets people, it's when the law is applied to some and not to others. We need the laws, our laws to be applied to us all equally. Justice is supposed to be blind. I myself, I know that Thousand Oaks is a relatively safe community, and you probably don't have a lot of problems with illegal immigration. However, it can, it goes from county to county. I myself was the victim of an illegal alien drunk driver in Beverly Hills at 8:00 in the morning. So it doesn't matter how safe your community is, it affects us all, and I ask you all to take up this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Colleen Bush followed by Sandy Sauerman. Colleen Bush. I understand that. So again, I'm going to kindly respectfully ask the folks here, the folks can't hear their names, I'm doing my best to say it as loud as I can, so if we could just control the volume, that would be great. Very much helpful. Good evening, ma'am. There's your mic right there. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. I am here to talk about SB 54. Recently, I've written the entire council about trying to get SB 54 on the agenda, and two of you responded to me, Mr. Price, Joe Price, and Mina, who is the legislative foreign affairs or affairs or something like that. And both of them had replied to me, which I really appreciated that you did that. However, both of you took a similar stance in saying that SB 54 was a neutral subject to the city of TO. To me, neutrality means no involvement or putting your head in the sand. Our country was neutral in the beginning of World War II. During our neutrality, millions of lives were lost in concentration camps. I am deeply concerned for my own safety. I'm a baby boomer, and I don't know how many women would admit to that. But as you grow older, you are more concerned about your safety. And I'm sure there's many baby boomers in Thousand Oaks. So please place SB 54 on your agenda. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Sandy Sauerman followed by Antonio Sabato Jr. Good evening.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Sandy Sauerman. I live in Thousand Oaks. I could probably talk three minutes. I've emailed most of you, but I'll just say, I've been watching many California cities joining together against SB 54. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, not California, and so I hope we can put this issue on the agenda and we can all discuss this and have a vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Antonio Sabato Jr. followed by Penny Foster.
Thank you for having me. I thank you for meeting. Some of you guys I've met, good friends. But my name is Antonio Sabato Jr. I'm coming here as a citizen of Thousand Oaks. I've been here 15 years. I love it here. My kids are here, born here, some of them, and we just need a little bit more from you guys. We need to follow the law. I came to this country as an immigrant in 1985 to search for a better life, but I came here legally. I never took a dime from this country, I gave it back. When illegals come to our country, they endanger our friends, our families, our children, and everybody else. We don't know who they are. We need to start following the law. I came to this country because we do follow the law. But recently, California doesn't want to follow the law in any way, shape, or form. We rely on you to take care of these problems. We need to be comfortable in our community, no matter what. You need to put us first, not illegal immigrants who are coming here, using us, and then at the end of the day, we have to pay for it. We are done paying for it. And you know what's going to happen in this community? You're going to be invaded, and it's going to happen what happened in Oxnard and other cities, like San Francisco, by the way. We don't want to be like that. We want to stand strong. We don't want to follow the herd of the Sacramento politicians. We want to be ourselves, Americans. This issue is a local, American issue in every way, shape, or form, and you guys have to stand strong with this, because we rely on you. And in God's name, I hope you do, because we need you more than anything. Thank you very much for hearing.
Thank you, sir. Penny Foster followed by John Cummings. Penny Foster followed by John Cummings. Mr. Cummings, are you here? Why don't you make your way up? Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Penny Foster. I'm from Newberry Park. My husband and I have lived in Newberry Park for 42 years. During that time, we have relied on our city council to protect us and act in the best interests of its citizens who are here legally. We believe that sanctuary cities put the safety of its residents in jeopardy. Even though sanctuary cities have been around for a while, the state is now getting on the bandwagon, forcing its will on all cities. I respectfully request a stay of enforcement on SB 54 until the federal government and state government come to a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John Cummings followed by Tony Doltz followed by Deborah Babber. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Mr. Sabato is right about one thing. An onslaught of outsiders has descended upon our city. They've invaded from the south, and they're sucking up local resources. They're insisting that we cater to their demands, and they're threatening the sovereignty of our laws. But I'm talking about the out-of-towners who have made Thousand Oaks a target as they seek to undermine SB 54. There are too many people in this room who do not live in Thousand Oaks. But having intimidated city councils and boards of supervisors in San Diego and Orange Counties this spring, and Simi Valley just last night, they've filled the seats and hogged the microphone here, urging you to perpetrate an act of insubordination against our state government. These anti-immigration agitators want you to betray people who have lived here for years, and they want you to oppose the law that was signed by our governor after being supported by our senator and our assembly member, and our sheriff, by the way. They want our council to endorse forcing our agencies and our employees to participate in a despicable deportation regime that was imposed by an amoral president who was not supported by a majority of local voters. Thank you. Despite a few correctable flaws, the California Values Act actually is working well. It hasn't stopped ICE agents themselves from menacing our immigrant neighbors, and it hasn't stopped our correction system from notifying ICE when truly dangerous convicts are nearing release from prison. But it does keep ICE from accessing state and local records or exploiting our law enforcement officers and other government employees in its pursuit of undocumented residents. Far too often, immigrants who are obeying our laws and trying to live in peace have had their lives turned upside down when ICE agents knock on the wrong door or randomly stop them in the street. SB 54 provides a modicum of comfort for innocent people living in fear under Trump and the bigots he's empowered, fear that they will be targeted by ICE in their children's schools or in our courthouses, our city halls, and our community centers. During the April 10 meeting, Mr. Powers suggested that the council's unlikely to consider a resolution or a lawsuit opposing SB 54. Here's hoping our leaders continue to repel the angry anti-immigrant horde and stand up for the laws of this state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Doltz will be our next speaker. I think my microphone was off, but I think the folks got the point here is, we want to be respectful of all the speakers, regardless of whether you happen to agree with their individual viewpoint, and not turn this into an us-versus-them council meeting. Are we all okay with that? Can I get your cooperation with that? All right, appreciate it. Mr. Doltz, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tony Doltz. I'm a foreign-born, naturalized citizen. I'm married and have two minor children, and we live in Thousand Oaks. As I said earlier, something unfortunate has happened. Governor Brown has signed SB 54. SB 54 is a new law that makes it illegal for local law enforcement to turn over criminal illegal aliens to the federal government. Since the new law, criminal illegal aliens with no legal right to live or work in the United States are let loose on our streets where they may do us harm. The federal government has sued California over SB 54 alleging it is unconstitutional. Many cities and counties agree and have filed amicus briefs. I have written to each of you twice and called you. I have written to each of you twice and called you, asking you to put on the agenda a motion for a stay of enforcement until the court's rule on SB 54's unconstitutionality. Only one of you has responded to date. Your failure to act is putting us in danger, in my opinion. Failure to vote on a stay of enforcement forces armed federal agents to ferret out these dangerous criminal illegal aliens openly in the streets, which will inevitably lead to violent articulations, injury, or death of federal agents, innocents in the community, and the illegal aliens themselves. Why would you consent to SB 54 tying the hands of local law enforcement, especially as it represents a unnecessary public safety danger? Do not delay. Put on the agenda a motion for a stay of enforcement. Beginning today, city residents will launch a website and Facebook page entitled SB 54: First Victim. The first Thousand Oaks victim at the hands of a criminal illegal alien released under SB 54 will reflect on you. These social media sites will inform the residents of your courage to defend us and/or your failure to act. On these pages, we will honor the first victim and the victim's family and disclose what role each of you played. Starting today, SB 54: Public Scrutiny and Accountability Begins in Thousand Oaks.
Mr. Doltz, your time's expired. Thanks very much. Deborah Babber, followed by John Duncan. Following Mr. Duncan will be Bruce Boyer. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for your service, Mr. Mayor, council members. I cherish the right to come before you and tonight and speak. I cherish law and order. I cherish our Constitution. I cherish our nation. I cherish God. SB 54 flies in the face of all things that I cherish. There are 13 red and white stripes on our American flag representing the original 13 colonies. There are 50 white stars on a blue background. Which one of these stars is California? We don't know. We're not supposed to know, because we are the United States of America, under one God, under one flag, and under one federal government. I can't vote for you, because I live in Port Juaniemi, one of the few people here who's spoken, who lives outside the area. But the criminal alien can't vote for you either. But that criminal alien, if that person is released back into the public, they can travel to your community, they can travel to my community, they can commit additional crimes. SB 54 is a rebellion, pure and simple. It's unconstitutional, and it's dangerous on many, many levels. Please pass a resolution condemning SB 54, or do something. Amicus brief, there are many options you might choose. Please take this opportunity to again show your commitment to law and order, and to uphold your oath of office, and to uphold our Constitution. Your oath alone makes this a city council issue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. John Duncan, followed by Bruce Boyer, followed by George Miller.
Good evening, council members. My name is John Duncan. I grew up here in Thousand Oaks. And over the last 20-plus years, I had an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. I traveled around the world in the military, and I saw a lot of things. And what's surprising is what I'm seeing that we're needing right now, what I'm seeing is that we even need to have this discussion. One of my main missions in the military was security. And this is a simple, simple subject. And when we let people into our country illegally, and we just let them hang out and commit crimes, or not, I mean, just by being here illegally and not trying to become a citizen, that's illegal. That's a crime. So what I'm praying for is you all do the moral and honorable thing for your citizens of Thousand Oaks. And, you know, don't let this continue. And we've got to start here, at the local level. You know, we can't be indifferent and just kind of go, "Well, I don't know. Maybe it's okay. Maybe it's not." We've got to take a stand and do the right thing, and provide good security for our community. That's all I got.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Duncan. Bruce Boyer, followed by George Miller, followed by Jeffrey Burham. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Boyer. I'm candidate for sheriff here in Ventura County. And after speaking here last week, I reflected on it and spoke to somebody, and she said, "Well, why did the city manager speak up?" No offense, Mr. Powers, I said, "Because the city council didn't wish to." And she said, "Well, aren't they the city council? Is the city manager elected?" I said, "No, you are absolutely correct. It is the city council." We want to hear from the elected officials. No offense, Mr. Powers, you were voted by the people of Thousand Oaks, of which I'm not one. I'm one of those, what Jerry Brown refers to me now as a low-life politician. I'll wear that with pride. The people need to hear from you. Not, as you can in this circumstance, of course, not respond, and I know that, and I called for you to hold a public forum. Everybody in this room can see there's disagreement. Well, we can't both be right. Well, we could both be wrong. Hold a public forum. When we say to you that SB 54 is rebellion... Amy nailed it. It is. Let's have a public discussion. We can explain to people, "Look, it's not anything but a rebellion issue. This is law by the Constitution that Congress enacts immigration law." If you don't like what Congress does for immigration law, "Oh, my gosh, we've got two people here running for Congress. Vote for one of them or reelect Brownlee." Those are the choices. Do not come to the city and go, "Ignore Congress." No. That is an argument for rebellion, anarchy, or dictatorship. We all will reject those. Now, the city manager, quoted Chief Police Hegel, that there's no adverse effects in the crime, the city of Thousand Oaks from illegal aliens. Well, I went out to Moore Park. In a Moore Park, I spoke about a Mr. Varga. He was arrested on January 1st. He posted $9,000 bail. Well, I have some questions, and, okay, I'm just a cowboy, but explain to me how charges of sexual assault on a 13-year-old mean that he's a $9,000 bail. And of course, he skedaddled because there was no ice hole put on him. Well, are you kind-hearted people that care so much about the illegals? Explain to this father if that was my 13-year-old daughter that was raped, or yours. The city pays almost $50 million a year to the Ventura Sheriff's Department. Chief Hegel collects about $400,000 of that in his salary and benefits package. How about we have the Ventura County Sheriff's Department and Chief Hegel give us some answers? Let him explain to us peons out here, us low-life politicians, how there's no adverse effect. Explain it to me. Maybe you're right, Chief Hegel. Let's give you the opportunity, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Boyer. George Miller, followed by Jeffrey Burham, followed by Ginny Sand. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, council, staff, and the public. Well, one of your number asked me to get more civically involved, so here I am, and here goes. I was going to repeat a lot of the things I've heard people say tonight, but they stole my thunder. So I'm just going to focus on a few areas. I'm going to focus on the excuses that you guys are laying out for not doing a damn thing so far. I think that's really what's most germane to this evening. You should have acted. You have not acted. We are here to pressure you to act. We will continue to do it until you act, or you are replaced. Okay? One of the gentlemen was derisive about people that don't live in Thousand Oaks. I've been in California for 38 years. Thousand Oaks was my very first home. If it wasn't for the lure of the beach, I would still live there. I run a little publication called Citizens Journal. Some of you might have heard of. Thorn in your sides, maybe. Tough. I am normally here to speak for my own self, and I'm speaking for a majority of our readers who have responded, and I'm speaking for our editorial policy. We are flat-out opposed to SB 54. I want to go through the excuses that you're using. Excuse number one, it's a federal issue. It's not our issue. A federal issue is your issue. If you don't support constitutional law, you're not supporting America. Some have said, "Well, it's really a 10th Amendment issue. It states rights. Jerry Brown can sign any law that he wants." No, he can't. Not when he's in violation of Article 6 of the Constitution of the United States, and Article 1, Section 8 of the Enumerated Powers. Try looking it up sometime, folks in the audience, please. This is blatant. When you have open borders in California, you have open borders by extension for the entire country, so we're all living with your dumb decisions made out in Sacramento, and by extension, implicit support within the council. If the Sheriff's Department, which you've contracted with to provide police protection in Thousand Oaks, does not enforce the law, you have every right to terminate their services since they're in violation of their contract, and you are in violation of your oath if you do not do that. Okay? Some say the police want it. Some police associations support SB 54. Well, guess what? Police associations tend to work for city councils. They tend to do what city councils want. Interestingly, the Sheriff's Association is opposed to SB 54 for all the right reasons. Look it up if you don't believe me, right? Some say it's not an economic burden, that illegal immigrants are a net benefit to society. Maybe immigrants are, but illegal immigrants are not, because the cost of housing and law enforcement and providing service to illegal immigrants far exceed any benefit. Not that that's germane, since they're in violation of the law, right? Not a crime. Actually, certain types of illegal immigration are crimes, and the other ones are civil infractions which should be prosecuted. I call upon you to come up with a resolution against SB 54, and to take concrete steps for the enforcement, and some of the things that I've recommended tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Burham, followed by Ginny Sand, followed by Angela Nardone. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. Thank you so much for your service. My name is Jeffrey Burham, and I am running for Congress in this district, and I appreciate your allowing me to come and chair in my own county and in my own state. Not only am I running for Congress, but I am a Desert Storm and Cold War veteran. If you had told me the things that are going on right now, after I served under the Reagan Revolution, I would have never believed it. I would have never believed it. I am a fourth-generation Californian, and I'm proud of it. I have never seen such a mess in my life. We have the highest taxes, the highest poverty, the lowest quality of life, and you all know that. And so I'm just wondering to myself, what are you going to do about it? Is it your responsibility or not? So what I'd like you to do is just close your eyes. Close your eyes with me and think about the oath of office that you took, because I know I took it when I graduated from the Air Force Academy. I will uphold and defend the Constitution. And that's basic. What were you thinking when you took that oath? Because now, we're asking you to fulfill your oath. And I want to ask each and every one of you, what happens when we have the next Kate Steinle issue? How are you going to feel with that, feel about that? And tell me that this isn't a moral issue. Now, let's just talk about the financial issue. I told you that the National Academy of Sciences said it costs us $296 billion. That study was done in 2016. It's valid. It costs $55 billion to Californians. To the extent you are taking money from citizens to pay for illegal aliens, that is theft. But of course, we have a governor that calls our taxpayers freeloaders. And the same governor also calls people who oppose that lowlifes. I have never been so angered by any statements like that in my entire life. You can call me a liar, but that was our governor. Now, there is no question that SB 54 is an act of secession. It is the result of a bloodless invasion of 30 million illegal aliens. So I ask you again, what will you do about it? I was in Simi Valley last night...
Sir, your time's up.
And they said yes.
Thank you.
When will you?
Thank you. Ginny Sand, followed by Angela Nardone, and our last speaker is Ernesto Nardone. Nardone. Ginny Sand. Angela Nardone. Are you Ginny? Good evening. Are you Ms. Sand? Ms. Sand, and you're Ms. Nardone?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you swap there. Okay. That's all right. You guys are jacking up my order here.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I greatly appreciate your giving us this opportunity to speak and kind of weigh in here. I have to say, I really do believe that you all are very well-intentioned and dedicated public servants. And unfortunately, I mean, it'd be nice, because immigration is a federal issue, it would be very nice to be able to kind of weigh in and have a lot of, you know, have this kind of access to our federal officials, but we don't. Who we have is you. And you people, who as I said, are very well-intentioned, but when you did take your oath of office, you did agree to defend and uphold the Constitution. And this is not something that isn't of great cost to the citizens of this country. And it is obviously, I'm a huge fan of immigrants and immigration. But I do think it's absolutely essential that we make, and I frankly am not in favor of deporting anyone except criminal illegal aliens that have actually committed crimes other than coming to this country illegally. Frankly, if I were in some of those countries, in Mexico, Salvador, or anyplace, and I could get across that border, I probably would have 50 times. However, the fact that I can empathize with them and sympathize with them does not mean that we have any business making their issues and their needs and requirements a priority in this state. And the fact that we have an out-of-control legislature, and 2/3 majority in Sacramento, means that we have an awful lot of things passed by them and signed by them that is very bad for this country. It's very bad for the state. And we have, you know, what I read all the time in the mainstream media is how great everything's looking in California, and how wonderful our economy is. Yeah, well, at the same time, we have unfunded mandates, we have pensions that are going to eventually, not in the too-distant future, bankrupt our state, and we have an illegal immigrant situation that we cannot tolerate when you have our legislature thumbing its nose at the Constitution and federal dictates. So I think it's costing our communities. It's overwhelming our police departments. It is costing our neighborhoods in crime, and also in public education. My husband, well, is one of the top education reform advocates in the country, and we have among the highest-paid teachers in the country, and we are second and third from the bottom academically. This is outrageous. California is paying a very high price for their horrible taxes, for the gas taxes, for the high level of poverty we have. And so we need all of you to do the right thing. I say, all it takes for a bad policy to flourish is for good men and good women to do nothing. Thank you.
Angela Nardone, followed by Ernesto Nardone, is our last speaker. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for your service to the community. Working at the city level is so important, because so many people can oftentimes miss these very critical local issues, and I thank you for your service every day. My name is Angela Nardone, and I have been a part of this community since 1979. I went to Westlake Hills, not too far down the street, Westlake High School, further down there, and Cal Lutheran. down there, and Cal Lutheran over there. So I've been here a while. I joke that either by blood or marriage, I'm related to about half of Thousand Oaks, I also have family members that are in law enforcement locally, so of course, it's always a forefront of my mind. So I'm here today to represent myself, my family, and for those people in the community that I've spoken to that feel very similarly to me, that weren't able to make it down today. This issue of sanctuary status to those that are here illegally, where our law enforcement's not able to cooperate with federal authorities, is extremely important. I want to point out something, because we talk about federal agents as if they're from someplace really far away. I have friends that live in Ventura County that are federal agents. So we are literally putting, you know, our Thousand Oaks residents that are federal agents, as well as our Thousand Oaks residents that are local agents, all at risk by not allowing them to comply with our laws. And I really hope that we can come out from under this SB 54 and that this council can step forward to do that, because that's very important for our community. I am first-generation both sides, so I am a product of people coming here legally. My parents went through the process to have family sponsor them, went through an application process, had to pay the fees, and came here legally. And I'm fully supportive of legal immigration. What I don't support is when people are here illegally and then, in addition, that commit crimes, and they should not be here, we should not provide them sanctuary. I think that's just fundamentally wrong. It puts our priorities completely out of whack. So for the sake of our community, I'm a mother, I have kids here, my kids go to Oaks Christian and some local schools here, and I just, I hope for the sake of our community, the safety of our children, the safety of all of our citizens, that we can opt out of SB 54 in this city. And I pray for the courage of you to do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Move over to the other mic. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, City Council members. My name is Ernesto Nardone. I don't normally speak in public on purpose, because I usually, I'm expecting that elected officials like you do all the hard work, there's a lot of responsibility, and the right decisions are always being made. It is a very tough position you're in, and I have utmost respect, and I want to congratulate you for taking this huge responsibility on your behalf. One of the things that you need to consider, which is very important, is that immigration is definitely a great asset to this country, but it has to be legal immigration. I personally was also an immigrant. I was born in Canada, I worked for IBM for 22 years at executive levels, I got sponsored, and I came to the United States, and it was the best thing that ever happened to my life. But we did it the right way. We also have family members here that are in the police departments, and there's a lot of concern about everything that's going on here from an illegal immigration perspective. And you need to factor that in. A lot of times, people might talk about it, you know, under the covers and all that, but you need to understand that this is a major, major impact to our community. The last thing we want is having guilt or not feeling comfortable in the positions that you're all taking, that something negative impacts to the community, to a member of your family, or to our kids. So it is very important that we take that into consideration and that we repeal this horrible law that's going on. I've traveled all over the world. This is the nicest, the best country we have. An unbelievable state, California, and Thousand Oaks is really a jewel in the United States. We need your help to continue preserving this great place that we have, and it's your responsibility that you've taken this oath to be able to represent us, to be able to do the right thing. So thank you again for all your help.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right, that concludes our public comments, and let me go to City Manager for any follow-up comments.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Fox. Just briefly and for the benefit of the audience, there's a standing item on the agenda after public comments, and just for the reason that you are hearing me speak on these, it's generally issues like paving streets or dealing with certain issues around town, and so they're not agendized, therefore the City Council can't speak to them, so that's why they have, that's why I generally speak. To the extent, comments tonight, appreciate everyone coming out and respectfully sharing their perspectives. Heard from a number of passionate speakers. There were many comments and suggestions. Some of those suggestions have potential legal implications, so I'll be conferring with our city attorney after the meeting. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fox. Going to move to Item 7, that's our consent calendar, and we had no items called special, so we need a motion on the consent. Mr. Price.
I would move the balance of the consent calendar.
All right, Mr. Price moves. Any comments? Hearing none, prepare the vote, please.
The motion passes 5-0, and I have an ordinance title for reading. Ordinance Amending Section 5-29.24 of Municipal Code Regarding Location of Commercial Cannabis Businesses, MCA 2018-70141, Ordinance Number 1644 NS.
All right, and that is approved. Council's going to stand in recess for 10 minutes before we start a public hearing. Thank you. All right, we will reconvene, the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 24, 2018. We'll move to Item 8A, that's our public hearing. Ms. Rodriguez, could you call Item 8A for public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda Item 8A regarding amendments to general plan land use map and zoning for seven sites, LU 2017-70594 and Z 2017-70622. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the City Council regarding this public hearing. All documents for City Council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. 28 individuals have presented speaker cards in pursuant to council standards. Each speaker will have two minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Town, you're going to provide the staff report. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This item, as was just recited, involves proposed amendments to the general plan land use map and to the zoning designations for some of those areas, overall at seven sites located throughout the city. And the idea, the fundamental idea tonight, is to consider amending the general plan land use map and zoning so that the density as depicted on the land use map and in the zoning designations more closely matches the actual as-built densities that we see in the field. I think it's helpful to go back and review Measure E. What we're talking about tonight is related to Measure E, and we've talked about this in the past as we've debated this topic and as it's moved forward. So just a few comments about that I think are appropriate. As the council is aware, Measure E was approved by the voters on November 5, 1996, overall intent to control residential and commercial growth. We'll be talking tonight mainly about residential, but it addresses commercial as well. A few key points about Measure E. It operates on a net cumulative basis, so that if there's a reduction in density, if you're talking about residential or commercial acres in one part of the city, that decrease in capacity could theoretically be located somewhere else. The key, as I note here, is that there's no net increase in either the residential capacity or the commercial capacity, e.g., acreage, over what existed when Measure E was approved. And voter approval is required for any project that would exceed those two baselines as they existed back on November 5, 1996. So how does Measure E actually work? It's actually implemented through changes to the land use map of the general plan. This is the land use map of the general plan. Different colors depict different land uses. I included here in the lower left just a few of the more common residential categories. You can see they're typically depicted in, you know, various shades of yellow and brown. And you can see here that there's a density range for each one of these categories, which we'll be talking about in a moment. So how does a land use designation actually be changed on that map and potentially reallocated to some other location? It really happens through two different fundamental steps. The first, and this is in the context of Measure E, the first is a general plan amendment to decrease density somewhere, one or more sites. And that's shown on the left side of this image in the sort of light brown. And that starts with, as you can see on the far left, City Council initiation of the general plan amendment. It has to go to you as the City Council to even start the process. If you do allow the general plan amendment to go forward, and again, this is a general amendment to decrease density in an area, then it goes to Planning Commission for recommendation, and then it comes back to you for final action. The cross-hatched box in this image depicts where we are tonight. So tonight, we are at the final step of that, a decision-making process of whether you should allow decreases in density at specified sites. You initiated the general plan amendment, Planning Commission has held its hearing, and here we are tonight. Now, that action, that group of actions is to, again, decrease density. It's a whole different process, shown in blue here, to allocate units out to one or more projects. That also has a three-step process. The first step we call pre-screening. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And then again, Planning Commission recommendation and City Council hearing. So overall, to decrease density in one area and potentially, no guarantee, allocate those units out to a project, overall, it's a six-step process and six public meetings and hearings. So just a moment on pre-screening. I think this is important. As I mentioned, it's not directly related to tonight's discussion, because you can see it's not part of the left side of this image, it's the first step in that blue process. But the importance of the pre-screening is that if there are any units available, those units can only be allocated out if you give the green light for that project to move forward. At your very last council meeting, you adopted new citywide criteria for pre-screening. We used to have two processes, now we have one. And overall, the emphasis of those pre-screening criteria is, as I mentioned here, excellence in overall design of the project, and then community benefit. What is the project going to be giving back to the community in exchange for those units? What is the public benefit? Could be public space, commercial amenities, affordable housing is an important one. What is the community benefit? As you've done in the past, you do not have to allow a project to go forward, it can't even start the process unless you give it a green light through the pre-screening step. And then, just to reiterate, I know that I've said this in the past, but even if you allow a project to start down that process, there's no guarantee that you obviously have to approve it at the end. So now let's talk just a little bit about the Measure E analysis that led directly to tonight. Last June, you asked staff to conduct a comprehensive analysis of Measure E. We had never done that before, so we followed your direction and brought a report back to you at the end of October. And that report revealed several, I think, important items that are worth mentioning tonight. First of all, the, if I can point this out, let's just look at the dark green bars here. So what this tells us, this is 1970, 1996, and 2017. What that study showed us, in part, was that the general plan capacity for residential units increased dramatically, really, from 1970 to 1996 when Measure E was adopted. That was an increase in capacity of about 16,000 units. As I said a few minutes ago, due to Measure E, that capacity has not changed. That cannot change based on the letter of Measure E without a vote of the people. The light green bars denote actual built units, and you can see there was also a dramatic increase from 1970 up to 1996. That's a difference of about 29,000 homes were built. And then you can see how it tapered off very significantly. The difference between these two bars, between 1996 and 2017, is about 5,000 units, so it decreased significantly. Now, the timeframes between these bars is different, so if you look at the average units built per year during those two timeframes, you can see that prior to Measure E, we were looking at about 1,100 units being built per year in Thousand Oaks. After Measure E, it dropped down to an average of 248 a year. Now, Measure E was a very important part of that decline, there were other factors as well, but I just say this because there was a very marked decrease. In fact, that decrease was about, as you can see, 78% in average annual growth. Now, the last few years, as staff reported out to you a couple of council meetings ago, the last five years of residential growth in Thousand Oaks has been very modest, mainly due to the economy. We've only seen an average of about 65 units a year. But nonetheless, this gives you, I think, a nice overview of housing growth and how significantly it declined post-Measure E. Another outcome of the comprehensive analysis from last year was, is illustrated in this graphic, hopefully. What we found was that a lot of areas in the city, not really surprisingly, were built at lower densities than the maximums that are allowed under the general plan. Those are shown in light blue here. And then a subset of the light blue is shown in dark blue now. And that identified areas that were actually built at an entirely lower, one or more lower category of density. And that dark blue area in this exhibit, you've seen this before from the October meeting, was about 1,000 acres. Now, those 1,000 acres that were built at one or more lower densities accounts for a total capacity, theoretical capacity of about 5,400 units that are accessible under Measure E for a potential decrease of density and then potential reallocation elsewhere. Based on that analysis, you asked us to actually identify general plan amendments at the same October 24 meeting to not capture that entire amount, actually to not touch 80% of it, only to consider 20% of that amount, or about 1,080 units. We brought back, we, meaning staff, brought back an approach to do that, which identified seven areas for general plan amendments and some zone changes that are corresponding. Zone changes in terms of density adjustments, brought back that package to you in January, and you initiated that GPA approach. We brought that to the Planning Commission meeting on March 19. The majority recommended approval of the proposed amendments and zone changes. And that brings us really here tonight. Before I get into the specific general plan amendments, sort of the nuts and bolts of our discussion, just want to mention public outreach. We prepared a custom public outreach in accordance, obviously, with our code for each of the seven areas that we're talking about tonight, so it wasn't one overall description of all seven areas. We actually sent out individual notices to each of those areas as if it were a standalone project. We added a cover letter to what was sent to the property owners, and then we've had on the website since last October information on both Measure E and the proposed general plan amendments. So here we're looking at the seven areas that we'll be talking about tonight. These areas were selected because they are located throughout the city. They range in size from comparatively small, about three-acre areas, to about 39-acre areas. areas. They represent a range of current residential densities, low, medium, and high, to be specific. And they add up to about 1,080 units. These happen to add up to 1,088. So, now, we're going to dive into the seven areas individually. And what you are looking at now is a general plan land use exhibit. So, what it is showing in these various colors is the existing pattern. So, you can see, this is site number one. It's out at Dos Vientos on the west side of Villa Las Brisas. And you can see that today, on the general plan, it is designated as medium density. And if you look down here in the lower left, you can see, medium density in our general plan is 4.6 to 15 dwelling units per net acre. This area was built at 3.5 units per net acre. Therefore, it actually was built at a density that corresponds more correctly to low density, which is by definition 2 to 4.5. So, the 3.5 fits into this category based on its as-built density rather than what's shown on the plan, on the land use map. So, what we are proposing in this case, and the same approach follows, is that in this case, the medium density would be changed to low density on the general plan to reflect the actual density on-site. Site number two, this is on the north side, basically north of the Oaks Mall. The proposal is primarily to change the larger area from high to low density to, again, match actual density. And then, for a very small sliver, from high to medium, because it's actually part of the project to the west. This also includes a proposed zone change, same zoning designation, but a different density to match the actual density. Site number three is located on the north side of Gainesboro. This is just west of the Botanic Gardens, south of Tranchilla Hill. Our proposal is to go from high to medium density in the general plan and to have a corresponding zone change, still residential plan development, but from 25 unit max to The fourth site, this is on the east side of Moore Park. You can see just south of the 101 freeway, sort of east of the La Trova's Golf Course. The proposal here is from medium to low density and with a corresponding zone change to companion that. The fifth site is the Bridge Haven Tract. This is over on the north side of Petra Road, west of, just sort of west of Westlake Boulevard. You can see Westlake over here, Petra over here. The proposal here is from, as is noted here, from low to very low density to reflect, again, the density of the project as it was finally built. The second-to-last site is on the east side of Westlake. This is right at the top of Westlake as it sweeps down into Lang Ranch. This is off of Allison Court, and the proposal is low to very low density. And then, the final site, this is up in the Sunset Hills area. This is the 23 freeway, right here. And so, it's a smaller tract, just on the west side of the freeway and the north side of Sunset Hills Boulevard. Our proposal is from medium to low density with a companion zone change. So, I want to emphasize a couple of points. The current proposal, what is being proposed tonight, what has been proposed in the past and was evaluated by the commission, is the same method that we've been using in the past, that is, to consider decreases in density for certain areas. And then, those could theoretically be reallocated in the future to some other area, if you recall that yellow and blue diagram that I showed earlier. A very specific example is that city council approved, five years ago, a general plan amendment for the housing project on the west side of Ventu Park, immediately south of the freeway opposite Ramona Drive. That was from high to medium density, and that resulted in 218 units available for reallocation. So, that model, overall, is the same, and that specific example is comparable to what we're doing tonight. If you look at the past in terms of actions by city council to either reduce density, as I mentioned, or to potentially reallocate units out to a proposed project, what you see in sort of dark yellow here are actions by council to decrease density on a site. It's happened nine times since 2002, so over the past 15 years, nine times, council has taken an action to decrease density in a certain area in the city, one or more areas, in fact. And then, 10 times, which is depicted in blue, and these are just actions. These are not, this is not a representation of units. These are just the number of city council actions on the vertical axis. There have been 10 actions to actually allocate units out to a project. That's shown in the blue. So, over the past 15 years, there have been 19 separate actions to either reduce or potentially allocate units out. As I mentioned before, the proposal before you tonight would decrease residential density by 1,088 units. It would not, by definition, increase cumulative residential density above the 1996 baseline. Therefore, again, by definition, vote is not required. This is an action to decrease density, not increase it. Just a few other considerations, I think, are worth mentioning. What is being proposed, in my opinion, is consistent with general plan policies, several of which are shown here, to, for instance, maintain high-quality, single-family-character neighborhoods, to preserve existing neighborhoods. These actions would do that. We also have a policy about very low density being the appropriate land use category for hillside areas. That is one of our areas as part of the package tonight. These sites as well tonight that we're talking about are not needed to meet our regional housing needs assessment numbers. If we cannot propose to decrease density in one of those areas, if we've already used it to meet state mandates in the past, or current, in this case, housing element. And reallocation theoretically could help satisfy some of the housing goals. If you recall, when we presented that general plan status update report a couple of council meetings ago, we're still trying to meet low and very low income categories in terms of units, as required by the state of California. One other point I wanted to make just briefly is that, should you opt to approve the general plan amendments, it does not denote growth. There are a lot of steps. I won't go through all of them. They're depicted at the bottom, but there are many steps in the planning and development process. Not only the pre-screening, which I mentioned earlier, which is the far-left step in the process, but applicants have to go through pre-application, application, potentially development agreement, environmental analysis. There's a lot of steps in the process. A lot of projects fall out at various steps in the planning and development process. So, should you opt to decrease density tonight, that, in my opinion, does not mean that growth is a consequence. So, in conclusion, the proposed changes would align the general plan and zoning with the actual built environment that we see in these seven areas, these seven communities. It would, as I've said a couple of times, reduce the overall capacity of the general plan. It would allow the potential reallocation of the units, but there's not a direct connection. We don't have something right now that would need those, these units. We have, as I mentioned in the staff report, about 500 units that are already currently available for your potential allocation based on past decreases in density. So, those are already available. And as I mentioned also, the general plan capacity will still remain below that 1996 baseline. So, to wrap up, staff is recommending that city council approve the proposed amendments to the general plan land use map and the zoning for the identified sites as described in the draft resolution and ordinance that are included in your packets. And with that, I'd be certainly happy to answer any questions as well. Tonight with me are Peter Gilli, to my left, my deputy director of community development, and Jeff Spector, senior planner and a team member on this project. So, with that, be happy to answer questions.
Okay, Mr. Town, thank you. We're going to go to council first, questions to staff. Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Appreciate that presentation, Mr. Town. Thank you. It's interesting to see that this is not the first vote that this city council, or any city council prior to us, have voted on for a general plan amendment to re-designate unused units to the balance sheet. In fact, based on your graph, there's been 18 other votes, I think was the number, by various city councils. I remember one that I was involved in, and I think all of us were, except maybe council member McCoy, with the Chappelle property, where we re-designated 300 units of unused units to the balance sheet. I think that was just a couple of years ago. Is that correct?
Yes, there were, there was a change to and from residential up in the northern part of the Chappelle area a few years back.
So, in fact, since 2002, this council and other councils have voted to re-designate unused units to the balance sheet in the number of hundreds of units over that time period, have they not? Your mic.
That's correct. Nine times, council has acted to decrease density. 10 times, council has acted to allocate those units out.
Right. So, whether it's re-designation of unused units or reallocation of those units, the council has voted, and the council has voted virtually unanimously on this. I believe the tally is 82 votes for and only two against, and those two had to do with a mobile home park.
Correct. All of the votes by council have been unanimous in terms of decreasing density.
Right. And that's all of us, including our longest-serving council members, Mayor Fox and Council member Bill DePena, all been unanimous votes.
Thanks for refining us of our voting record. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Fox, just thought I'd bring that to your attention, in case you didn't remember. In fact, and now, let me ask you, over that time period, has any city council member called for a vote of the people on any of these general plan amendments?
No.
Has any citizen come forth and called for a vote of the people on these hundreds of units that we've re-designated?
No.
So, the question I ask you then, why is this different? Is it because we're doing, we're finally doing a comprehensive review, which we probably should have done years ago, versus this piecemeal approach that we've done for the last 15, 16 years?
I think there's, I think there's sort of two differences. One is that tonight's consideration is based on a comprehensive analysis. We had never done that before.
Your mic.
So, it's based on, thank you, it's based on comprehensive analysis that we had not done before. Before, we had brought items before the council on an individual basis without having benefited that full, that full review. And because it's based on a comprehensive analysis, and maybe based on what we presented last October, I mean, those are the only potential units that are available, so to speak. There's no, there's no other areas that are out there. That means, almost by definition, that the number of potential units before you tonight is larger than you have considered in the past. So, those, in my opinion, are the only two differences, and it's because we did that, took that comprehensive, that holistic approach to MEASUREE.
The number of units is larger, but the process which we're going through, we've been doing since 2002.
Correct.
Okay. And do you feel we've been transparent about this?
Well, all of those decisions have been made, like I said, through three-step processes that are all public meetings, public hearings.
All right. Thank you. And in effect, I'd beg the council's indulgence for just a moment more. Thank you, Mayor Fox. Rather than asking questions of my own, I thought I would share some of the questions that I've received and emails from our constituents. And again, I appreciate the emails. Feel free to email me anytime, call me on my cell phone. It's great that everybody's engaged. But I think these questions are relevant to what we're talking about tonight. The first one I got from, and these are quotes, the first one I got from a constituent was that, "Tonight, we are preferring a reinterpretation of MEASUREE." Would you agree with that?
I would just say that's not accurate. The proposed general plan amendments tonight, again, are to decrease density in seven specific areas. That is how we've done it in those nine cases that I mentioned before, including specifically the Ventu Park example where there was an existing development and has decreased from one residential category to the next lower density.
All right. This is a quote from a constituent, "That we are ramming housing permits through without community development department review." Is that what we're doing tonight?
No. The community development department, the department that I work with, reviews all proposed projects according to the code, according to city policies, often in coordination with the planning commission, often in coordination with yourselves to approve those projects. None of, none of the rigor of that review has changed.
In fact, housing permits aren't even on the table tonight, really.
Correct. Nothing before you tonight is to allocate any units out. It's only to decrease density.
Here's another quote, "These general plan amendments will allow more units than allotted in the general plan."
That's incorrect. And I say that's incorrect because, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, there are already a number of units, about 500, that are the result of past decreases in density, and what's before you tonight is an additional 1,088 units.
Thousand Oaks lacks the infrastructure to support additional units. And if you remember, one of the reasons MEASUREE was initially instituted was, in fact, to be sure that our infrastructure, that housing didn't outgrow our infrastructure. But according to this particular constituent, we lack the infrastructure to support any additional units.
No, the infrastructure, in terms of water, wastewater, are fully adequate to handle that potential growth. Again, that's not what we're talking about tonight, but the capacity does exist.
Then, I got an email from a constituent, Newbury Park, quote, "Newbury Park will look like Culver City," sorry, Culver City, "with high-density housing."
Well, it's, again, that's, that's not true. And I say that because, and not being, I'm not being light about it, but the fact is that most of Thousand Oaks is already developed. It is predominantly low-density or very low-density, single-family tracks with a lot of open space. Open space accounts for about 40% of our city, and the other accounts for about 37% of the city. So, combined, about 75% of the city is basically low-density, single-family homes or existing or proposed open space. So, open space parks and golf courses, that's the dark green in the land use map. So, no, it's not going to change Newbury Park into any other city.
All right. Newbury Park safe. Okay, just two more. And this one, I've gotten from more than one constituent, but this is a quote, "The action before us tonight will add 40% more housing units, 40% to the general plan, meaning thousands of additional units."
So, again, just to reiterate, what's before you tonight is not to increase density, is not to allocate units. It is a proposed decrease in capacity.
And in fact, if these additional units were ever built, which no one knows if they ever will be or not, it's less than 2% of the outstanding housing in the city, is it not?
Correct. So, so the potential, theoretically, if all, if you opted tonight to approve the general plan amendments, those units would be available for potential reallocation. Theoretically, if those were all allocated out, it would represent about a 2% difference.
2%, not 40.
Correct, in housing units.
All right. And finally, one more. Quote, "We're going to remove open space, or build into the open space," and again, sorry, Culver City, "and turn into Culver City." sorry, Culver City, "and turn into Culver City." I don't know what the focus in our Culver City is, but the key issue here that this is going to affect our open space.
This will not affect open space. Open space is protected in multiple ways, through the Parks Initiative, through open space zoning. This will not affect the open space.
All right, thank you, Mr. Town. So, the reason I bring this up, I mean, these are legitimate questions from our constituents. I wanted to answer them directly as best, as best as we could, and I just ask our speakers as they come up, because I know we have some speakers on this issue, to try to maybe pull away from the hype, some of the hyperbole and the emotion, and stick to, stick to the facts about the issue. Because we're not going to add 40% housing units. We're not going to invade the open space. A lot of these things, these fears, are just not going to happen. And as I mentioned, the interesting part, we've had many of these general plan amendment votes over the last 15, 16 years, and they've all been unanimously approved by members sitting right here in front of you, unanimously. So, that's all for me. Thank you. It's probably too much for me.
You're quite all right. Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. This analysis was done with the, with the help of GIS, correct?
That is correct.
How would this type of analysis been done in 2004 or in 1996?
One would have looked at the, the tract map, which would depict the number of units that were actually built, and then delete public streets, private streets, and base that analysis on basically the lots that are depicted on the tract map at that time, when the project was originally approved.
That was not done in 1996 after voters approved Mejere, correct?
I'm sorry, what?
Was that done after Mejere was approved in 1996?
No.
Was it done in 2004, when we had the joint ad hoc committee of two planning commissioners and two council members?
The GIS analysis we conducted last year, so prior to that, the, the prior analyses for those decreases in density would have been based on tract map analysis.
The fact that the council voted perhaps unanimously on certain general plan amendments was because it was based on the interpretation that was approved by the council in 2005, correct?
That's correct.
We have here a supplemental packet, and I haven't been able to go through all of this, but there were, there were, there was some information submitted, and I know that, that you're aware of this as well. I became aware of this just this afternoon. This letter from a former planning commissioner is using tract maps to come up with a certain number of units that could be transferred, but those units are different from the units that were approved in October of 2017. And I was wondering, we haven't heard from the planning commissioner, but if you could explain the difference in the number of units based on a tract map versus the number based on the GIS?
Well, again, we did receive a, a letter from a former planning commissioner. We have reviewed that, that letter and can speak to it on each of the, each of the points that are raised in it. Overall, the, the comparison is occasionally made between past staff reports, past environmental impact reports, that do not always jive with the quantitative analysis that one sees in GIS, or some of the data that was contained in other reports. We, in one case, we determined after exhaustive review that it was not entirely accurate from that prior staff report, and so that's, that's one of the benefits of GIS, that you can sort of ferret out those, those potential inconsistencies, which we did. But other than that, it is, again, the analysis that we did for GIS identifies the, the, it's really a simple process, process. We look at the, the polygons, and then we create, figure out the net area. We take out public and private streets, and then figure out actual net density based on the number of units that are out there today. So there's really no, very little error in that approach.
But again, the GIS technology was not available in 96 or in 2004, and therefore, it wasn't really done.
I wouldn't, I'd say it's a, it was a function of the quality of GIS, it was a function of staff expertise to be able to actually use it, to apply it, as compared to how it was done in the past. And, and if it was the, the best approach, if you, if, if one thinks about it, to look at the city in its entirety, again, we're talking about, you know, hundreds of tracts, and, and to be able to use GIS technology, geographic information systems, to look at the city in its entirety, look at it in a very accurate way, look at the general plan land use categories and compare those to the actual density, was really only feasible in a practical sense through the use of GIS technology.
Thank you. And I have a question, it is a legal question, so perhaps it might be answered by Ms. Noonan. Is the, the question that came up on social media about, because Mejere is not, is vague, and it has conflicting sections within the law, is it possible to actually amend Mejere by a vote of the people and then revisit everything because there are different interpretations, potential different interpretations of Mejere?
I haven't, I haven't seen the social media post on that, but from my, in my opinion, from a legal perspective, it's not vague and ambiguous. There is no ambiguity, and if there was ambiguity, it would be subject to interpretation. Staff did not reinterpret anything. Staff followed the exact letter of what was written in Mejere. So in my, from my opinion, in my legal opinion, is that there is no ambiguity and that Mejere is very clear. With respect to your question on whether or not you could go to a vote of the people to amend Mejere, there's always a, there's always the ability to amend something, just, you know, any type of law can be amended. That's how our state legislature works, and that's how initiatives could also, also work as well.
Yeah, it was, I think it was made by a, a planning commissioner this particular, but in 2004, when we had the ad hoc committee, we had a different city attorney, and I think that there was a section in Mejere that wasn't really, that was somewhat in conflict with, with the title and, and the introduction of, of Mejere. That is what I'm referring to.
So, so the issue in 2004 was how you calculate the, the net, net density, because the word net density was in there. And so the committee that undertook it in 2004, they opined that, actually, let me pull it up real quick, because I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth. The committee concluded that the implication that cumulative could allow several amendments to occur as long as there is no net increase above the baseline general plan of November 1996 is central to the committee's suggested options. So the committee recognized that based on the plain language of Mejere, the word cumulative, every word in an ordinance has specific meaning. You can't interpret an ordinance in such a way that there are surplus words in there that don't have meaning. So the committee determined that the word cumulative has meaning, and that no net increase has meaning. The question before the committee was, based on that, how do you, how do you, how do you take units from one property and transfer it to the other? And they came up with three different proposals.
Yeah, correct, thank you. And I'm pretty much done with my questions for now, but just wanted to mention that we had an ad hoc committee in 2004 because Mejere was, we couldn't figure out how to implement it. So that is why the ad hoc committee was, was established. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bill De La Peña. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had done some of the same homework as my council colleague, Adam, had done, and, and actually was going to ask some of the same questions, perhaps framed a little differently, but since he did it in that manner, I'd just like you, you to address one additional concern that, that I received, and that is that there have been no new state regulations passed that impact development cities.
Well, actually, there are a number of, of laws that went into effect last September at the state level, actually 15 laws that went into effect that, that essentially affect or could affect housing at the local level. Overall, if I can paraphrase, summarize, the intention is to, is to make it more rigorous in terms of, of sort of pushing local cities to allow housing. You know, we in Thousand Oaks have taken a very, very careful and measured approach to, to housing. Like I mentioned before, it's, it's a difficult process to get through. State laws in general are really pushing hard on cities to basically take a slightly less or more significantly easier approach to housing review. And so there are other laws that are even proposed this, this calendar year. We'll see what happens with those, but the, the housing package that the governor signed last September is, is significant. It, it will, I think, affect cities like Thousand Oaks in both short and long term. And just on a related note, again, the state mandates that we update our housing element, that's an element in the general plan, every eight years, we're in the middle of a cycle. We have three years left, and so we will need to adopt a new housing element by 2021. And so we anticipate that we will be receiving state-mandated housing target numbers next year in 2019.
RENA numbers.
RENA, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, right.
So suffice to say then that, that our past practice of closely scrutinizing those sorts of development applications would be one that would be, the state would take a dim view of?
I would agree with that.
Okay. And with respect to ADUs, do you think that has any impact on, or is that something that the state has foisted upon us?
Actually, accessory dwelling units, these are units that can either be added within an existing structure, or even your garage, or built in your backyard. That's actually a good example of a state sort of mandate for cities to loosen up their standards for such units. These are also referred to as granny flats. They're self-contained units to basically increase the amount of housing stock in, in any community.
Thank you. Referring back to one of your slides, the past actions to reduce density and allocate units, you mentioned numbers, and I'm just looking at the graph there, the bar graph there. You mentioned that there were nine different occasions where we decreased density on a site and an equal number, or 10 maybe, allocation of those units? That, what am I missing here? Because I only see eight bars here with decreases and five with allocations.
So each, each row, if I can, this is one actions, two actions, three actions, so...
I'm sorry, I wasn't looking at that. Oh, okay.
So these are number of council actions, and if you add up the, the yellow and the blue, it adds up to nine yellow and 10 blue. Each one of those is, is a single action.
See that clearly now. Thank you for pointing that out. Now, the, the, the total number of units cumulatively that have been added to the bank, if you will, in, in those nine actions, general plan amendments, what was that number?
So that number was 1,433 units.
And that was between 2002...
Between 2002 and last year.
And last year. And of those 1,433, how many of those have been allocated to projects?
So 1,000 units have been allocated out to projects.
In that same period of time?
Correct. Either allocated out to projects, or a little nuance, a portion of that was allocated to the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, which have not all been used up.
Right. That would have been my next question there. And getting back to some of the line of questioning from Council Member Bill De La Peña, is it true that GIS is a much more reliable method for analyzing the net density, and certainly more so than looking at tract maps and doing it the old-fashioned way, if you will?
It's, it's more, it's more accurate, and you can analyze a much larger amount of data. I mean, to analyze all of the tracts in Thousand Oaks by hand would be less accurate and would take an enormous amount of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Town, let me have just a couple of questions here. From my perspective, I think there's three main items I'd like to clarify, both based on the emails I've received, the calls I've received, a number of public comments, and then I just have a few follow-up items. To start with, for the general public and those watching at home, because I've been around a while, I wrote Mejere. I'm the author of it. I proposed it to the city council. Council approved it, and I campaigned for it and brought it to the voters. So I didn't have any idea that I'd be sitting here 24 years later, well, it was 1996, talking about what the intent of Mejere was, but here we are. The other person who is a significant contributor to Mejere is sitting right there in the second row. It's our former city attorney, Mark Sellers, which I imagine, because he's here tonight, is going to put in a speaker card and talk a little bit about his perspective from a legal city attorney perspective. So I just say that by way of background, that no one, no one in this city is a bigger proponent of Mejere than the guy that wrote it. We can debate all along about, you know, what you've read in the paper and how you want to view this, but the, the facts are the facts, is in 1996, Mejere was written for two reasons. First, to make sure that the city did not grow its infrastructure, and secondly, to hopefully end the political debate that we were going to become another San Fernando Valley. Now, we have two, two decades of history, and I think that answer has been resoundingly put forth as a fact, is we are not going to become another San Fernando Valley. So, Mr. Town, if you could put up the slide that had the residential base unit slide, please? All right, I think you, when you were making your presentation to city council, you pointed out that the, the light green is the built units, and the, the darker green is the baseline units. Can you just go over once again the 1996, which is the year Mejere was put in place by the voters, and 2017 with respect to the baseline number of units that exists in the city essentially today?
Sure, be happy to. So if you look at these, these two paired bars, so 1996 here and 2017 there, you'll notice that the dark green, which, which denotes the capacity, the general plan residential capacity as shown on the map, it did not change between those two points in time. It cannot change due to Mejere. If Mejere didn't exist hypothetically, this bar on the right could have been taller, could have been greater, as we saw between 1970 and 1996. It could not under Mejere. It has to stay the same.
All right. And again, so, and if you want to look at other cities in Ventura County, or certainly in our region, that bar with cities that don't have a Mejere-type ordinance would be higher, because there would not be a limit on growth. But in Thousand Oaks, we have not had that growth because of Mejere. The other thing that you pointed out was in, from 1970 to 1996, we had approximately 1,100 pre-Mejere units, was that per year, I imagine? Built?
Is, right. So this is the next slide. So between 1970 and 1996, we saw about 1,100 units built per year. That's before Mejere. After Mejere, it dropped very significantly down to 248.
248. So using those two slides, the data is irrefutable. Mejere has worked exactly as it was designed. It basically... It basically, I'm not going to say stopped development in Thousand Oaks, but it certainly had a dramatic impact on the, not just the rate of growth, but the actual growth in our community. These facts are really indisputable. The second slide I'd like you to put up is the past action slide. So hopefully that addresses the question, did Measure E work? And I assume whether you're here or not and you want to speak, part of the reason you're here is because you think it worked and you think it's working well for our city. And so I wanted to point that out, that, you know, as a factual matter, Measure E's worked exactly as it was supposed to, as it was supposed to act. We have not had uncontrolled growth. We are not even close to the San Fernando Valley. In fact, if you look at the data, our city has grown at an extremely slow rate since 1996. And then, again, by extension, it has not exceeded our infrastructure at all. Our infrastructure is in very, very good shape in our community. All right. The next slide is the past action slide. Mr. Adams talked a little bit about that, but I know from looking at the slide and just our past history, that there's a number of actions that are not quite the same as the action we're taking tonight. But I'd like you to give an example to the community, if you will, of a past action that in every aspect, other than the number of units, is exactly like the action council is prepared to act on with the agenda tonight.
So the best example there would be one of these, again, this is two actions in 2013. One of those two actions had to do with the existing residential tract on the west side of Ventura Road. A general plan amendment was processed. Council approved it to decrease the density from high to medium on the general plan. That action, one of these two actions in 2013, again, yellow to decrease density, basically resulted in 218 units being available for reallocation somewhere else at some point in the future.
Okay. So that action in 2013?
Correct. That was five years ago.
Was five years ago, was the exact same action council has on the agenda tonight. And I would note, it wasn't just 10 or 15 units. That was, what was that, 238 units?
218.
Okay. In any definition in the city of Thousand Oaks, that's a lot of units. And there was not this kind of hysteria and not this kind of newspaper coverage. It was basically a normal course of action by the city council. The action we're taking tonight, the number of units is different, because we actually finally counted them, but it's the exact same action that we took in 2013. So the second question is, is council doing something different? And the answer to that is factually, no. We're not doing anything different than we've done 18 times in the past, but in 2013, we took the exact same action. Some of you were around when we took that action, 238 units. The third point is, does this require a vote? And the city attorney has already applied, it doesn't require a vote. The whole point of Measure E wasn't that we would be voting on complex issues. And I can have, Mr. Towne, just go through the slides very quickly on the different land units that we're transferring with the different, in the different planning areas.
These images?
Yeah. Just go through a couple of them.
Okay. Very quickly, again, in this case, this is a tract on the west side of Villas Prises. The proposal is to change the land use map from medium density to low density for this area, shown in red, because the built density is, in this case, as an example, 3.5 units per net acre. That is appropriately located, not in the medium, which is the land use classification today, but it's appropriately located in the low density category, because it is between 2 and 4.5 units.
Okay. Show us another example.
Another example?
Yeah. One more.
So the next example, this one is a proposal, this is from high to low density. So this was actually developed at a significantly, actually two categories lower than the general plan shows today. The general plan shows it as high density today. Proposal is to reduce it to low density, because if you look at this, this large area, this brown area, the actual built density was 3.8 units per net acre. Notice that falls into the low density range, 2 to 4.5. It does not fall into the high density category, which it is today.
Okay. So I wanted Mr. Towne to go through that, because I hope that, that from a reasonable standpoint, and I recognize that some folks are, have very strong emotions on this issue, but from a reasonable standpoint, if you stand back and look at that, if we were to ask the voters to vote with that type of information, that would be ridiculous. The city council system, or they've studied this stuff, to ask voters of this city to look at these maps and have some type of explanation, I can't even fathom how we would explain that on a ballot, yes or no, do you want these transfers? I would suggest that that's just really not a reasonable expectation. I can tell you, as the person who wrote Measure E, that was never the intention of Measure E. Measure E was intended, two reasons, that we would not outgrow our infrastructure, and we would not have unlimited growth in our community. That's why Measure E was written. So the answer to the question is, could we vote on these things? Yes, they are legislative actions. City attorneys have opined. Does Measure E require it? It absolutely does not. But I just would point out, looking at these maps, looking at these staff presentations, council has, you know, basically an entire week to look at this. All of us are former planning commissioners with respect to what... I'm not saying this is rocket science, but these are not simple items that are reduced to a ballot argument. And I would suggest, either way, that's why you elected five people to serve in the city council, to look at these issues and make a decision what we thought was in the best interest of the community. Measure E was, even though it may not be legally required, it was certainly the spirit that if we were going to bulldoze Westlake High School and build a bunch of condominiums, that's probably something we probably want to go to the voters on. Because that was never the intent of the use of Westlake High School. That's the type of thing that they've done in the San Fernando Valley. They bulldozed entire residential communities and built apartment houses. That is not what this community is looking for. That's not in character with Thousand Oaks, and it's certainly not what's on the agenda this evening. Tonight, we counted the units. We are taking a small number of those units, 20%. How did we arrive at that number? It was from a speaker that came right to this podium, in fact, she's here tonight, that suggested that we take a small portion of those total units and put them into the bank. And that's, that's the action that we're taking tonight. So we're not adding any more baseline units. We're not adding more density. It doesn't require a vote, and certainly, we're not doing anything different than what we've done in the past. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, just a quick add-on to that, since we're talking about the seven sites that are up for general plan amendments, where we're going to take unused units and re-designate them on the balance sheet. We did a public outreach to these seven areas, did we not?
Yes, we did.
And what was the approval rate for the proposed general plan amendment?
We were contacted, we were contacted by about 25 people, and only a couple of contacts actually had concerns about the proposal. The vast majority actually were fine with it. They often called staff or emailed us, because they didn't quite understand what was being proposed. They saw the sign, you know, the large 4x8 white sign, which often denotes development. When they understood that that was not what was proposed, we did not, I mean, they were fine with the idea of aligning these densities with their actual...
So the approval rate, from what I understand, is about 90%, because people, once it was explained to them what that big white sign meant, was that we were really, in effect, protecting the existing density where they live now by reflecting that in the general plan and preventing any increased density in these seven areas. Isn't that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Ms. Bill de La Peña?
Thank you. Just for clarification regarding general plan amendments since 2005, 2004, we approved in 2005 as a council, in 2004 as a committee, with the baseline in 1996, or that particular year, as being basically zero when we started transferring all of those units. And that is what we have relied upon for the last 14 years. And therefore, there wasn't an outcry, nothing at all, because we all knew what the number in the bank was. And that number has now changed due to a mathematical analysis. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Ms. Bill de La Peña. All right. We're going to go to speaker cards. I think we have 29 speakers. So by council policy, that's two minutes. So you may have noticed that I do my best to give you some leeway and some discretion. If I feel you're winding your comments up, I'm going to do my best not to interrupt. But I would ask, please don't repeat comments over and over again, because we want to get to all the speakers, and do your best to be respectful as you can of the time lights that we have up there. Okay? So our first speaker is Matthew Fineup, followed by Lori Mahoney. Mr. Fineup, good evening.
Mayor and council members, my name is Matthew Fineup. I am a resident of the city of Ventura, but I work here in Thousand Oaks as the executive director for the Center for Economic Research and Forecasting at California Lutheran University. The last two times that this issue was considered by this council, I spoke about the broader economic context that we find ourselves in, and I was hoping to do that again this evening. So I remind you that the most recent data from the Department of Commerce indicates that Ventura County suffered a significant recession in 2016. And together, the years 2014 to 2016 represent the worst period of economic growth of any three consecutive years for which we have data, worse even than the financial crisis and the Great Recession. Unfortunately, data released by the California EDD in just the last two weeks confirms that the county's economic weakness is continuing. The city of Thousand Oaks, according to the report, lost 200 additional jobs in the biotechnology sector in the last nine months, and is down more than 1,600 over the last five years. The financial services sector in Thousand Oaks has lost over 400 jobs in the last four years, and is down 1,000 since the recession. Local employers are communicating explicitly that a lack of building and the resulting housing affordability crisis are primary drivers. So the plan that's currently before this council is an appropriate and necessary one, given that economic context. And to me, it's a real bright spot in what is otherwise a shaky economic outlook. It's also a thoughtful and measured approach to the issue, given that we're considering just 20% of the available units. I also just want to add the personal note that I have before, that this is an issue that strikes very close to home. I have been, made my home here for 14 years, chose to raise my family here as a two-career household, and we've, my wife has had to commute increasingly far distances to find a job that lets us work here, commuting as far as two hours to Orange County. So thank you, and I strongly urge you to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Lori Mahoney, followed by Steve Dwyer. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Lori Mahoney. I'm a 30-year resident of Thousand Oaks. I voted, I was here and voted in support of Measure E when it was up in 1996, but I'm deeply disappointed by this. I oppose the general plan amendment. And I actually have an analogy, that's how I think about things, and my analogy is someone justifying drinking a Diet Coke in exchange for having a chocolate chip cookie. And so my analogy is that this general plan amendment is your Diet Coke. You did outreach to these neighborhoods, but when they wake up in the morning, is anything going to be different in their neighborhood? Absolutely not. You're not doing anything for them. You're not changing their neighborhood. You're not adding anything at all. So that's the Diet Coke. There's no nutritional value, there's no calories, there's nothing. But on the other hand, it's a perception. What you have to understand is our perception. You're having a meeting later this week about your downtown area, and our perception as residents is that we are perceiving that you're adding these units as high density. That's what we're afraid of. That's what we don't want. So these two things coming together at the same time, I look at as a Diet Coke and a chocolate chip cookie. My last thing is, I really disagree with you on infrastructure. That is the whole premise of this. We're rationing our water, we have a lot of pollution, we have poor parking, traffic is a problem, homelessness, vandalism on the boulevard. I can't, I mean, really? I think you need more infrastructure. So that's my opinion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mahoney. Stephen Dyer, followed by Gail Hubs. Dwyer, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Steve Dwyer. I am the executive director with Habitat for Humanity here in Ventura County, and I'm also a Thousand Oaks resident. As you all know, Habitat is a developer of homes to be constructed and sold to families of low income here in Ventura County. And in my work with Habitat, then, I, of course, run across families every day who have two household earners, and yet can't afford to purchase or rent a home, and end up combining in a home, living with relatives, even though they've got their own children, and generally unable to build the kind of stability and base that we would hope for our families. The need for affordable housing is certainly well documented. If you haven't seen the latest, at the end of March, the California Association of Realtors puts the affordability index in Ventura County at 26%, which means that even those of us who already live here, only about 26% of us would have the incomes to purchase a home today with a median price of around $640,000. But this is, to me, not just an issue of zoning and housing, this is really an issue of the economic vitality of our city. I also happen to be the parent of two college-educated young professionals who don't live here, and probably never will. They live out of state, because the single differentiator for our area is housing. And they can build a more economically vital and vibrant life by living in an area with lower housing costs. This is not good for our families. It's also not good for the economic growth of our region. So I ask you to simply pass this amendment, because in my view, as a developer here in the county, this just starts the discussion. As was pointed out, this, there are no projects to be approved here, there's no place for these units to go, but it creates an opportunity for developers to come before the council and planning commission with thoughtful projects that would increase the vitality of our city. So I urge your approval.
Thank you, sir. Gail Hubs, followed by Janie Schmidt.
I'm going to pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hubs. Janie Schmidt. Following Ms. Schmidt will be John Reed. There we go. You're good, ma'am, Mr. Reed. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Again, my name is Janie Schmidt, a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks and Newberry Park. And I'm, I look at these charts, and even you are confused. And here we are, trying to figure out what you're trying to do. And we look at the acorn, and you show how you want to build structures with three, four, five, and there wasn't even a five-story structure. I mean, this is not what we want. And all this talk about units, I'm not sure what kind of unit you're talking about. Is it a house? Is it a granny flat? Is it going to be five stories high? We were called Thousand Oaks. Every time you build, more oak trees disappear. All you have to do is ride down Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and you'll see that most things are a story or two, and that's fine. You can see our beautiful hills. Then you go down now to see what's happening down in Camarillo, and there's apartment buildings going up left and right, all over the fields. We're going to be flooded with traffic. We're going to have, our infrastructure is not able to handle anything. We're told to not water, get rid of trees, we get palm trees. This is going to be Thousand Oaks, palm trees pretty soon. It's not going to be oak trees. You're just, you give us all this information, and we have units, and we have no idea what our town is going to look like. And this is important to all of us. We don't want to not see our mountains anymore. We don't want to have our streets to even shop down here. I don't even want to shop here. You can't even get to the places you want because of the traffic. And now you want more traffic on... And now you want more traffic on Thousand Oaks Boulevard.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. John Reed, followed by Linda Fisher-Hilton. Mr. Reed, good evening.
Good evening, council members. My name's John Reed. I'm a 30-year resident of Thousand Oaks, a California attorney as well. Thank you for your service and listening to all of us tonight as we share our opinions. You know, I've heard it said that a skilled carpenter will measure twice and cut once. And the reason the carpenter does that is he doesn't want to make a mistake, doesn't want to ruin whatever project he's working on. I'd like you to ask, to ask you tonight to consider delaying any action this significant, where you're going from 500 available units to 5,400 available units potentially, if I understand you, until you get more meaningful public input than 25 people who phoned in after seeing a sign in their neighborhood. I've been running by one of those signs for a month and a half. I had no idea what it was about until tonight. I had no idea it was about looking at increasing available units, none. And I don't understand a rush or a need for you to act tonight. I built a house in the city, remodeled a house, tore it down, built a new one. It took me one full year, and city staff was great, to go through the review process, to get the permits, to pay the fees. So what's the rush about delaying what you're proposing to do tonight to get some more meaningful input? I'd recommend that you consider slowing down. Take a long look at this matter, secure public input, and then decide what the appropriate act. We in the public will feel we had much more involvement in the process than we have now. It may be that everything that you're saying is right, but until we have a chance to chew on it, to look at it, we're not going to be entirely certain that that is the case.
Mr. Reed.
Am I out of time?
Yeah, you're out of time.
Okay. So consider appointing a committee to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Linda Fisher-Hilton, followed by Sean Peroski. Ms. Hilton, good evening.
Good evening. Linda Fisher-Hilton, Area Housing Authority of the County of Ventura. As an affordable housing provider and the city's housing authority, we are on the front lines for housing. We are the ones taking calls from the residents who are looking for a place to live in Thousand Oaks. Be it an affordable market rate, be it a condo, an apartment, single-family home, or a granny flat, they're looking for a place in Thousand Oaks. In the last few months, I have personally taken calls from seniors, nurses, teachers, students, and even a city employee, all of whom are currently living or working in TO and unable to find a vacant rental. I take calls from family members whose parents need to downsize and are currently living in Thousand Oaks, and there's no place for them to move to. The need for additional housing opportunities in Thousand Oaks is tremendous. Each of us wants quality of life. It's a universal desire, and how that comes about is going to be different for everyone. Without exception, quality of life all begins with a place to call home. Regardless of the process, the city's commitment to meeting the community's housing needs must remain intact and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Peroski, followed by Fred Fukunaga. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council members and Mr. Mayor. My name is Sean Peroski. I'm here representing the Ventura County Coalition of Labor, Agriculture, and Business. We represent a diverse coalition of farmers, small business owners, trade labor unions, and individuals dedicated to strengthening our county's economy and maintaining Ventura County as a good place to work and live. Housing is at a crisis point in our county, as explained very ably by Matt Fineup. This is why I've been encouraged by the city of Thousand Oaks' recent decision to think outside the box and find ways to provide housing in a responsible way. Contrary to many claims being made, the changes to the way residential units are calculated under Measure E are entirely consistent with the initiative that voters approved. Measure E requires a vote of the people for, quote, "a net increase in the maximum number of residential dwelling units permissible under the proposed residential density ranges over that then shown in the land use element of the general plan." This reference to net dwelling units in the existing general plan is no accident and is repeated in the document. Measure E repeats that voter approval is required for exceeding dwelling unit per net acre density ranges shown on the land use element of the city's general plan as of November 5th, 1996. Again, the initiative references a net increase in the maximum number of residential dwelling units which could be permitted under proposed land use designation. This is the initiative that the people of Thousand Oaks voted on and approved through a majority vote. The language and intent of the initiative are clear. Had the initiative intended to limit density to what had already been built, it could have easily done so. Had it intended to limit the baseline to what could be reasonably developed, it could have done so. It didn't either, choosing instead to make repeated unambiguous references to the density ranges allowed in the general plan. It's important that we rely on this clear language of the measure and to respect the will of the voters by being faithful to the letter of the law that they approved. I encourage the council to continue moving forward and finding solutions to our housing crisis. You are helping provide a better future for the people of the city as well as their children. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Fred Fukunaga, followed by Nick Kidway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great pronunciation also. Council members, thank you very much for listening. The last time I spoke to the city council was when you passed Thousand Oaks' specific plan, and you promised to be very judicious, careful, and that made me feel at ease. When I read the Thousand Oaks acorn regarding your vote on, tonight, on the general amendment to the, the amendment to the, to the general plan, I became concerned on page 10, April 19th version. In a nutshell, it says, "Measure E bank, units currently available, 433. Units available, if council approves amendment, 1,521, with an additional 4,000 down, you know, in the wings." One word I'm scared about, and the one word we're all concerned about, is quality of life. And you all care about that, I know you do. Let me give you a specific example, on the way down here today. Los Feliz Drive, just due west of here, the next block up, around the curve just before you hit 7-Eleven, there's an apartment house being built three stories high. I drove down Los Feliz Drive to compare, and there are other three-story apartment houses. So it's in keeping as far as three stories. Okay. When you drive down Herb's Road, as I did, because I only live a mile and a half from here, when you get closer, that three-story, the same as the others on Los Feliz, sticks out like a sore thumb. And it blocks the view of the hillside, and I'm thinking, my God, what did we do? I'm thinking, quality of life. We all are concerned, I know you are conscientious, but I think that was a mistake. And I'm really, it's too late now. And I'm thinking, where do we go from here? So I'm just, I just really hope that we go in the right direction. Mr. Mayor, thank you for going back to Measure E, because I was wondering what the intent was, and you made it very specific, and you did a great job, you know, in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I just, quality of life, that's all I want to leave you with, because my wife and I have been here for 22 years, we owned the house here for 22 years. This is a wonderful city to live in. I'm so privileged.
Okay, sir.
Every time I go into LA.
Thank you.
Forget it. Thank you.
All right. Nick Kidway, followed by Sandy Smith. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, Councilman Nick Egbal-Kidway, resident of Newberry Park since 1977. Good evening. I want to begin by remembering God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. Thank you, and thank you for letting me live in this great city. First, we were played a bad prank by the city to say general plan allowed 80,000 dwellings, playing with the math last year. Now, by using convoluted logic, try to make us feel good that we need to reclassify about 1,000-plus homes, making us believe that this is the new nirvana. All of these nice pictures in your packet, plus 200 pages, take us away from the target and that we all know the game is over in this city for large buildings or large lots. Only about 300 to 400 lots remain. Anything else to be considered requires a vote of the people, at least that's what I've been thinking since this measure was passed. While I and many of my friends do not like rule by petitions by the people, we are at the point in Southern California which has been destroyed by the politicians playing these games. A lady talked about not being able to go to lunch in this city. Well, try doing that. My wife lived for about seven, eight months lately in Irvine, and she only went two miles for lunch, because to go anywhere in Irvine for lunch, five, seven miles, it's 25 minutes, 30 minutes each way. I mean, who has that kind of time to waste during lunch? I've driven in West LA quite a bit for work, and if you need to, you can try it anytime, go to Olympic Boulevard or go to Sunset, three-quarter of a mile takes 45 minutes. That's what this city will come to if you are not careful, and please do not ruin the city.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Sandy Smith, followed by Lucas Natal. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, members of the council staff. My name is Sandy Smith. I'm a resident of Ventura, 68-year resident of the county of Ventura. I'm here this evening representing the Ventura County Economic Development Association. Vasidos businesses have identified the lack of housing as the number-one challenge in attracting a workforce and in retaining the workers that they have. But in addition to identifying the lack of and cost of housing as an obstacle to economic growth and sustainability, our businesses have also noted that today's workforce is drawn to a particular lifestyle. Unfortunately, it's a lifestyle that does not exist in Thousand Oaks. By approving staff's recommendation this evening, you will provide an alternative to single-family detached housing, an alternative that will appeal to youth and younger demographic, to those that enjoy the ability to work, live, and play within a walkable environment that is not dependent on getting in a car to move between those uses and endeavors. I am sure there are individuals here this evening speaking against this action that enjoy visiting and vacationing in the communities that offer this type of lifestyle and land use, but for some reason resist allowing it in their own city. A thousand units sounds like a lot of housing, but as a land use planner and consultant, and as somebody who has taught urban planning at Cal Lutheran University for 13 years, the creation of a few walkable nodes on a three-mile corridor will not change the complexion of the community, it will not result in excessive density, nor threaten the integrity of your existing neighborhoods. It is also, doesn't happen overnight, and it is built over many years. I urge this council to again do the right thing to support staff's recommendation and exhibit the political will necessary to move beyond the fears of a vocal few, whose vision does not promote nor create a model of sustainability, a model that balances the economy, environment, and social equity, and a model that, when followed, truly leads to the maintenance of quality of life in a community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Lucas Natal, followed by Tim Gallagher. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. I couldn't think of a better person to speak before me. My name is Lucas Natal, and I've lived here in beautiful Ventura County since 1989, or for the better part of 30 years. Like so many of you, my family originally located here from Los Angeles to Thousand Oaks before settling on the Santa Rosa Valley. As a child, I have fond memories of playing in the Acres of Lemon orchards adjacent to my family home in beautiful Camarillo. As a teenager, I remember the widening of streets and the addition of neighborhoods at a steady pace. Later, as a young adult, and as many 18-year-olds do, I left to attend the University of California San Diego and have gone on to live and work in Europe, Asia, and the Middle East. A few years ago, missing the place that I loved most, I decided to return back to Ventura County to build a career in commercial real estate. To my surprise, not much had changed since my teenage years, except not in the good way. With insufficient housing, rental rates out of control, I couldn't even think about purchasing a home. So I found myself at a crossroads, moved to a different area, maybe out of state, somewhere more affordable, or do something like my brother had done and moved to Los Angeles, or perhaps moved to my family home, as the vast majority of my peers had done, and moved back in with parents. When I see the plans for Thousand Oaks and the Boulevard, it makes me hopeful and enthusiastic that we are realizing as a community the need to build inward in desirable locations while also keeping our open spaces untouched. I would love to live on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, to walk, to meet friends on the weekends, and wow, maybe even bike or walk to work. And while I haven't left Ventura County yet, unless cities like Thousand Oaks start approving plans to attract and keep young talent, build affordable housing, and urbanize our suburban cores, I may have no other choice. I urge you to approve staff's direction and continue to move forward with Measure E and with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tim Gallagher, followed by Yvonne Brockwell. Good evening, Mr. Gallagher.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Tim Gallagher, resident of Somas, and a member of a group you may have heard of, the Housing Solution Working Group that is associated with California Lutheran Center for Economic Research and Forecasting. Our working group is unique. We gather people who are not usually in the same room, much less on the same page, and we find common ground. In our case, the common ground is how the lack of affordable housing is hurting our community. In this room, we have people, like I say, they're usually not together, people like CAWS, the Ventura Land Trust, the Nature Conservancy, Lennar, the largest home builder in the, in the United States. We have represented some major employers like Amgen, the naval base of Ventura County, and we're even adding former board members from SOAR, who understand the intent of that legislation was not to stop building, but to stop building in the green belts. All these people are coming together because we understand that the county's housing shortage is damaging the way we live in this county. That's our common ground. Not having enough housing is bad for our economy, it's bad for our social equity, and it's even bad for our environment. Our air quality is suffering because we have 120,000 car trips a day from people leaving this county to find a job that'll help them pay to live here, or people living somewhere else who come here to work, 120,000 trips a day. The economy is suffering. Matthew gave you some numbers on the employers who are leaving. Our group is just advocating for intelligent policy. Nobody in our group wants another culver city. We are, we're advocating for intelligent moves such as the matter before you tonight because it makes our community better. It makes people like Lucas have a chance to live here. You, as a council, have taken a very measured, reasonable approach, and people who accuse you of creating the next overcrowded city in the San Fernando Valley are just not being reasonable. Your council took a reasonable position when it decided to add just 20% of the housing units it could have added, and that's what this process is about, making reasonable decisions that maintain and improve our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. By the way, just want to thank the speakers for trying their best to adhere to the time limits, you guys are doing a very good job. Yvonne Brockwell, followed by Lori Dingman. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Yvonne Brockwell. My family moved to Thousand Oaks 43 years ago. Tonight, you are considering stripping our property of buildable units, moving them to a bank while removing our right to reasonable use of our property, and denying us our vote in the matter. This makes it extremely difficult to trust everything you have said in the past and anything you say going forward. These seven neighborhoods, they're not sites, these are populated neighborhoods with families that may want to put in their own ADU. These seven neighborhoods you seek to reduce in value are a line in the sand. Our trust is bent to the breaking point. Are you willing to cross that line? We've paid a premium to live in a carefully-planned community with decades of a promise for our right to vote on any major impacts to the development of our community. This is a major impact. We recognize that continued careful planning and development is necessary. What you are considering would destroy decades of careful planning and remove our rights to reasonable use of our property. It is hard to imagine that the buildable units on our property that you are taking from us are of no value, not after all the time, effort, and money that has been spent on this item. After a long look, it feels like you've been banking on our property. This is entirely inappropriate, and it puts our city in a precarious position for potential litigation. We are a community of intelligent, creative, forward-thinking property owners and voters. Do you trust us to vote? We're intelligent enough to figure it out. it out. Tonight, you could decide to remove our right to reasonable use of our property and our right to vote. Tonight, you could be deciding whose trust you will break. You could also consider slowing things down and taking a longer look. The developers won't vanish. The state won't be reviewing our housing element for years. There is time to suss things out and attend to them in a proper order.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, we are slow at growth. That is what makes us beautiful, distinctive, and valuable. Don't sell us short.
Thank you very much. Lori Dingman, followed by Carol Smith. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and council members. So, I've listened to everything that you've had to say. I've listened to people in the community here. I wrote a bunch of things down. The concern here is, you were talking about the fact that this has happened in the past, that you've done this in the past, that you've reallocated things in the past, but you've never done it like this. This appears to us who live here that you've gotten to the end, you've got less than 500 units left, and now you're scrambling to figure out another way to add more back in. And so you've reached back 30, 40 years into old communities and are pulling things out. I tried to educate myself. I'm certainly not as educated on this issue as all of you, but I'm trying to educate myself on this issue. And so I was reading some articles, Acorn, The Star, and reading about the Hidden Canyon condo complex next to Westlake High School, which is one of the, not one of the ones, the seven sites, but one of the ones that includes the 5,400. And so they were proposed to build 2,200 lots and they are units of apartments, and they only built 600 condos instead. But they used all of that land. And so I think I'm speaking from a place where a lot of the people who live here are concerned. We don't want you to build on every piece of land. And so even though you only built 600 units on that area, you used up all the land. And now you're going to try to build where? That's the concern. Where are you going to try to build now? My house backs a parcel of one of your opportunity sites that has been listed. Are you going to try to add these 1,000 or 5,400 units and try to change the zoning in some of those areas? That's the concern. This is why we are concerned. And instead of, I feel like dismissing some of the people who wrote to you and making them feel silly for their concerns, we have genuine concerns. I have lived here since 1971. I've raised my kids here. Of course, I would like to be able to have them live in this city as well, but if you can't afford to live in this city, then maybe you do have to live someplace else. We don't want to build out all of Newbury Park, Thousand Oaks, Westlake.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we're just asking you to consider the people who live here now, and not just the people who, sorry, who want to live here.
All right.
Thank you.
Carol Smith, followed by Scott McNeil. Okay, thank you, Ms. Smith. Scott McNeil, followed by Tom Cohen. Good evening.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I just was looking through the screens that you have shown, and you know, the 1970 to 1990, I mean, the relative difference, I mean, would be obvious to anybody. I mean, that would be the growth of this community from basically 1959 to 1990. By the way, I'm a Thousand Oaks resident. Five years I was transferred here from New York in the architectural specifications with Gensler in downtown. I don't usually stand in front of a lot of people to speak, but there's so many discrepancies in everything that's laid out. I mean, basically, looking at your tract development, okay, you've got 33 on the board right here that are vacant tracts, and then you supposedly are reducing those to 5,483 units for building. Like I said, I've been in the architectural business for 25 years. I've never heard anything. I know there's a lot of people in this room right now that will benefit from this. A lot of the cause of low-income housing that you're looking at, those are all issues and problems that are apparent to us today. But coming from another state and being here looking at it without any kind of rent control, I've watched small businesses go out. I've watched people that make hundreds of thousands of dollars a year lose their homes because of the prices, and it's like you've got to start from there. You can't rebuild something and add more and continue to add more until you face what's in front of you, which is uncontrolled rents, businesses that are coming in with higher taxes, they're leaving. And that's why. That's why a lot of N-GIM is leaving, is because of taxes. And then looking at GIS technology, as you stated earlier, I mean, if anybody even knows what that is in this room, I'd be very, very surprised. But I mean, it's spatial thinking, and that is not something that we need to devise a community and plan around the community. And there's a number of developers in this room right now who stand to benefit greatly off of this measure if it's passed. And I agree with what Mr. Reed said, what's the rush? Because this sure came up fast.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tom Cohen, followed by John Duncan.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, council members, and city staff. My name is Tom Cohen, a resident of Thousand Oaks. It's my 56th year. Measure E was adopted to ensure we do not build more units than was contemplated in the general plan as of 1996, and that we had sufficient infrastructure to service the units, as we heard from Mayor Fox. If someone wants to build more units than contemplated under the general plan at that time, and those units that were moved into the Measure E bank or will be moved and they're gone, those projects will have to be approved by the voters of Thousand Oaks. No development that I'm aware of in Thousand Oaks was built to its absolute maximum density range under the general plan, and these seven sites identified in staff's report to the council are all examples of that. All seven sites will be downzoned to make sure no expansion or densification will occur in these neighborhoods. This is about preservation of the status quo for these neighborhoods and bringing the general plan in line with what was built. As I read it and study it, the action tonight is Accounting 101. It should have been done after the vote was in, after Measure E was adopted. However, it wasn't. And now the count has been done after a painstaking parcel-by-parcel analysis by city staff. The research was and is absolutely necessary to know so that the public and affected property owners are aware. This amendment ensures that the rights of the voters are, in fact, protected. Now, the rubber will really hit the road when a property owner needs a general plan amendment and an allocation of units from this Measure E pool. And the city council has the authority to say no and reject the request, or give its preliminary okay to move forward and go through the normal, difficult, time-consuming, expensive discretionary permit and environmental review process that will include action by both the commission and the city council. Even then, the project can still be denied after going through this arduous process. Thus, there's no assurance that these reallocated units will be assigned for use by the council. Our city has grown at a pace, at a snail's pace, over the last two decades, and this is because development is difficult in Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. John Duncan, followed by Mark Sellers.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How's everybody doing? Can I ask you guys questions?
Probably not. This is public comment.
But you just answered my question. Gotcha, okay.
Being courteous.
I'm, I know there's a lot of opposing views on this situation. Some say we need affordable housing. Some say we don't want to increase traffic and population and overbuild. I came from a big construction family, and I love building things. It's a lot of fun. I get a lot of joy out of that. And I also believe in laissez-faire, in freedom to do what you want to do, and the free market, and the freedom to do what you want to do with your land. But when everybody bought land here, they bought not only their land, but they bought an idea. They bought a plan. They bought into a plan to not overbuild the area. It was the general plan. You know, like the U.S. Constitution being the most important document in the world to me, next to the Bible, in our community, the general plan is probably the most important document we have in the Caneo Valley. And like the founding fathers of the U.S. Constitution, our founding fathers and mothers of the Caneo Valley, the general plan that they created, you know, was to make a nice place to live. We can always continue to change and redesignate zoning. We could keep doing it every couple of years. And when does it stop? I don't know how far that would go, but I'm sure there's always going to be some neighborhoods where we could, you know, pull a few units here, a few units there, and get some more permits issued out. You know, there's financial forces that will always pursue this unless we stop it. Now, it's normal for a town to slow down and adjust the economic activities as a town gets built out, but they adjust. And we can adjust, too. I think a good city to maybe check out, I don't know if you guys, you probably already have, but San Luis Obispo, I think they do a pretty good job at keeping their town nice. However, however you vote is up to you, but when you do, dig deep and do the ethical, moral thing, and don't do something that will affect your soul. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Mark Sellers, followed by Janet Miller-Wall. Mr. Sellers, good evening.
Good evening. Mark Sellers, City of Thousand Oaks. As the mayor mentioned, I came down here because I was directly involved with the drafting of Measure E. And when we got together in 1996, we had, came up with some concepts. One of the concepts we talked about was, we could make this very easy. We could adopt a measure, or have a measure, that required every general plan amendment to go to a vote of the people. It was decided that we didn't want that. We had no crystal ball. Nobody knew what was going to happen in the next 30 years. Therefore, we came up with a concept of the net cumulative effect that would allow you to reduce densities in one area of the community and add those densities to somewhere else, as long as the maximum cumulative effect of those changes did not exceed the maximum growth in the general plan. And we did this because, as the mayor mentioned, elections are expensive. Elections cause delay. Elections are not suited for a lot of land-use decisions. For example, Jerry Berdecky, who had a dealership, has a dealership right across the street here, had residential designated land right behind his dealership. Those parcels faced his service base. It made no sense in the world to put residential houses on those. So we did a general plan amendment after Measure E was adopted that basically extended his dealership out a few feet and into that residential area. We would never, he would never have done that if he had to go to election. It didn't make sense. And it was a kind of issue that was so minor and made sense that really didn't require a vote of this community. And it was mentioned that there's a housing crisis, and Sacramento is coming out with all sorts of bills. It reminds me of the time I went to Sacramento with a bunch of council members to meet with Willie Brown, the Speaker of the Assembly. At the time, he was criticizing us because we had redevelopment affordable housing funds that we weren't spending. The amounts were growing, and we weren't, he wasn't, Sacramento wasn't seeing projects. He simply said, if you guys don't spend that money and build some affordable housing projects, the state will step in. And the state builds best, the best type of housing the state builds is prisons. That got our attention. We went back, and we started to do some projects.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers.
Right, just keep local control. You've got it.
All right. Janet Miller-Wall, followed by Marilyn Carpenter. Good evening.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Fox, and staff. As my April 20, I am Janet Wall, 32-year resident of Thousand Oaks and the former planning commission who submitted the letter that you have discussed in part. As my April 24 letter explains, Joan Edwards and I submitted California Public Records Act requests to better understand the GIS process used to create new housing units from tracts already built over the last five decades. Seven of the already-built tracts are under your consideration this evening. I want to thank staff for their time in complying with most of our Public Record Act requests. Hundreds of pages of documents were supplied, and I have spent considerable time downloading, printing, and reviewing staff reports, EIRs, and MNDs, maps, and other documents related to projects that were approved from 1976 through 1989. I found this process was extremely interesting and quite enjoyable. If you have taken time to review my letter, and it is 34 pages and given to you late today, you understand that there are quite a few discrepancies with the staff recommendation that will allow you to create 1,080 additional housing units to potentially add to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, the former Kmart site, and elsewhere in the city. To agree to add these units to the housing bank without thoroughly explaining these discrepancies is to discredit the approval process that has guided our city to where it is today. For instance, if you don't agree with the fact that the maximum possible housing units that could be built on Track 4251 was 111 units due to the high, the slope and the flood control channel, then you have discredited former commissioners Cole, Lewis, Lazar, Vining, and Nikimkin. Staff has told you the new GIS program allows for more accurate net acreage statistics, but I believe that John Prescott, Rick Burgess, Greg Smith, Phil Gatch, and all your former staff experts were 100% correct in the calculations they presented to planning commissions, city councils, and the public at those historical meetings.
Ms. Wall, your time's up.
I have one more paragraph. It's important.
Fair enough.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Paraphrase.
I will. Again, there are some serious miscalculations in your packet, and these errors do not reflect the professionalism and integrity that is part of our city character. Please take a step back and be sure staff's numbers are honest, accurate, and transparent to all of us. Along with an earlier speaker, I would suggest an ad hoc committee to help the endeavor and ease residents' concerns. Thank you very much.
Marilyn Carpenter, followed by Rick Schroeder. Ms. Carpenter, good evening.
Hello again. I'm Marilyn Carpenter, and it's my privilege to be here this evening to read to you a letter that was signed by eight former planning commissioners. They are Jan Osterhaven, Nora Edukas, Dave Anderson, Amy Walker Davis, Mick Ferris, Janet Miller Walker, and I, Marilyn Carpenter. These are things that we believe you should take into consideration before amending the general plan for the Measure E housing bank. This is from all of us in concurrence. Honorable Mayor and council members, as former planning commissioners, we are intimately familiar with the history of our city's housing policy, including Measure E and staff's later adoption of a housing unit bank. Before you vote to amend the general plan to acquire housing units for the Measure E housing bank, we respectfully submit these three messages. Don't be afraid. Remember who you work for. And trust the process. First, don't be afraid. The methodology and all data used to determine the number of units proposed for the housing bank should be made freely available to the public and to the council. Openness is nothing to fear. There should be sufficient time for independent review to determine if the methodology can produce repeatable results. A vote at this stage on 1,080 units based on a possibly erroneous study is premature. Remember who you work for. At the time of Measure E's adoption, Councilmember Fox said the intent was to place the keys to the city's future in the hands of its citizens. That remains a worthy goal and one the council should honor.
Ms. Carpenter, you need to wrap it up.
Just another short paragraph. As our elected representatives, you do much to protect the city's decades-long policy of preserving the semi-rural character of our community. Remember, as elected representatives, your employers are all the citizens of Thousand Oaks who consistently say reducing traffic congestion and limiting growth are their top priorities. Your employers are not a group of developers. Your employers are not any one group of property owners. Your employers are not outside development consultants.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
In closing, we note that we have a mechanism in place for adding housing units if needed, and it does so without taking away property rights from anyone. That mechanism, Measure E, empowers the voters of Thousand Oaks to make the call. Thanks for letting me go on.
Rick Schroeder, followed by David Newman. Rick Schroeder, followed by David Newman.
Mayor Fox, members of the city council, city staff, I'm Rick Schroeder, I'm president of Many Mansions, and Many Mansions supports the staff's recommendations. We support it because we want to encourage the development of more residential housing within the city. The development of more residential housing, even if it is for high and moderate incomes, helps our low-income population since it reduces the demand upon existing housing, housing that could then become available for our low-income population. Now, I'm not sure how many households were on the Many Mansions waiting list back in 1996, but in 2002, when I became president, we had about 500 households on our waiting list. As of today, we have 2,983 households on our Many Mansions waiting list, the vast majority from people in Thousand Oaks. Staff's recommendations are very modest, and they represent good land use planning. It recognizes reality, the captured density can be better used elsewhere. It's been done before. It's a more efficient land use policy. It's a more flexible land use policy, and it gives the developer some certainty when they plan for potential developments. You know, real estate development is uncertain enough, but not knowing whether there's enough units in the Measure E bank is, has been very much a barrier to future development. So in conclusion, we support the recommendations. It does not create any more housing, but it is a good, positive step forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Newman, followed by Rosemary Allison.
I am David Newman of Thousand Oaks, appearing here as a citizen. These comments are not for or against development in general or about any project in particular. The issue before you is about land use policy, and who gets to decide that policy? It is about process. Many years ago, the council put in place a process, Measure E, which requires a public vote before adding housing units. Measure E does not say anything about a housing bank, a practice city staff adopted some years later. Measure E certainly does not say it's okay to take away property rights for future reallocation without consent. In fact, Measure E says the opposite. It says voters have a direct say in determining housing policy. In his cover letter for Measure E, Mayor Fox says this in as many words. He stated, "The intent was to place, quote, 'the keys to the city's future in the hands of the citizens,'" close quote. I ask respectfully that you honor that intent this evening. As it's currently written, the proposal before you is an end run around Measure E. I ask that if you intend to continue using a bank and intend to take some housing units from some citizens and give them to others, that you amend Measure E to reflect this, and then, and only then, with the consent of the voters. In short, I ask respectfully that you respect the will of the voters. Thank you.
Rosemary Allison, followed by Nancy Schmeets.
Hi there. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Rosemary Allison. I have been a full-time real estate agent in this area since 1975. When I started selling real estate here, the average home price was about $30,000, and jobs were plentiful. A lot has changed over the years. Home prices have soared, but in these last few years, I've had a large number of my clients who've had to leave our state due to the lack of jobs and the rising inability for their children to be able to live in their community. According to the latest economic forecast presentation, our county is singularly unique by losing the largest number of age 24 to 54 aged residents yearly. Companies are choosing other states and counties to move their workplaces to. The housing problem is not unique to the city of Thousand Oaks. Cities around the world are dealing with severe housing shortages and inflated housing costs, but nowhere is housing such a potent political issue as in our state, whose unique geography, state policies, and activist culture have combined with a poorly distributed economic boom to create the perfect storm. Over the past several years, California has not only produced too little housing, but too little of the right kind of housing. Between 2009 and 2014, the state added 77,000 more households than housing units. Governor Jerry Brown has signed into law more than a dozen bills to address California's housing crisis. Now it's up to council members in cities like the city of Thousand Oaks to faithfully enact the state's new housing agenda. It is important to grow our Ventura County housing base. Our housing shortage hurts our economy, our environment, and creates social inequities that are unfair to many hard-working people in this county. By approving this amendment, I believe that you will be doing your best to be compliant with state laws in addition to maintaining the small-town character that everybody really cherishes in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. Nancy Schmeets, followed by Tina Fergoli.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I was really surprised when you said, "Oh, we can't put out the graphs and the charts to the people. They're not going to get that. We, it's up to us." You're right. I'm stupid. I like the graphs and the charts. Wow. But I think if you did put it out for a vote, the smart people would get it. But one thing I did hear over and over and over again was the repeated phrase, "decrease of density." It's a really good piece of propaganda. It sounds good, decrease of density. But I don't think that's what, why we're here tonight. And I know all of you, everybody here, we all want that quality of life that our other speaker so eloquently shared with us. These newspapers represent just some of the letters that I've kind of collected and written myself, and just to give you a visual on how deeply people do care and are divided about this issue. And on a personal note, I voted for Measure E, and I've lived here since 1995. I had my car stolen out of my driveway a few years ago. People are starting going, going through my mailbox. I now have to have a off-site, you know, mailbox at the post office. The crime, the traffic, I've just seen it in the short time that I've lived here. And when I, you know, voted for Measure E in good faith, I had no idea we'd be here tonight. I understand the developers, the real estate people. I actually have a city in Culver City, so don't dis Culver City, a building in Culver City. We do want to, to go forward reasonably, ethically, morally. We, we do want to preserve our quality of life, and I think that is why we're all here in a reasonable manner. And I just, I hope that we do do it, and I really do feel that we should vote on any other consequential development for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Tina Fergoli, followed by Silvana Zucca.
Hello. I just have a couple of things to say. First, Mr. Fox keeps mentioning that Measure E worked in the past. Well, in the past, the baseline was 51,000 residential units, and you just agreed to change it to 81,000. That's 40% more units. Yeah, it is. And that's what people are concerned about. They're not concerned, and they're losing trust because of, the meeting seems sort of like a charade. It seems like you already know what you're going to vote for. The, the units, they're fictitious. The numbers are shady. So we're losing confidence in you guys. And also the, the mentioned state laws, none of them apply to the city at this time. And the things you're mentioning, they just don't add up to what you're doing. Affordable housing, we can all agree, we need affordable housing, but what you're doing has nothing to do with affordable housing. So, it doesn't. So anyways, I would like to know if you could please supply some type of document to prove to us that the actual general plan maximum at this point is 81,124 housing units. Is there anywhere at all that we can witness proof of this number at this point? Thank you.
Thank you. Silvana, Silvana Zucca, followed by Sean Meridian. This will be our last speaker. Good evening.
Good evening. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks since 1972. Mr. Adam, I don't appreciate you mocking your constituents. And Ms. Bill De La Peña, thank you for your work. I will vote for you because you are fighting to preserve our town, and right now, you're the only one that seems to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sean Meridian is our last speaker, and then we're going to take a brief recess.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Sean Meradian, lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks and the president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association. I'd just like to read a couple of brief comments on a statement we submitted. Want to make sure that it reaches your hands. On behalf of our board of directors for the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, we fully support the general land use amendments before you this evening in an effort to balance the housing needs of our community. Adequate housing is vital for the community's sustainability and economic development. Without housing for our residents, employers, universities, public service providers, seniors and young professionals, a large segment of our population will be phased out. The amendments before you provide the council with options to satisfy part of the foregoing population's demand while at the same time allowing better and more efficient use of property throughout the city, preserving our open space, and meeting our state housing requirements. We thank you for your continued support and commitment to our city by ensuring the residents and businesses have the tools and necessary to preserve the quality of life we all come to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to stand in recess for five minutes, just a brief recess, and then we'll reconvene. All right, we will reconvene our council meeting for April 24, 2018. We're going to go back to staff. Mr. Town, you have any follow-up comments after public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments. One speaker asked what a unit was. We're speaking of residential units tonight, whether it's a, a single-family detached home, whether it's a condominium, or whether it's an apartment. Those are all units. Those are residential units, and that's, that's what I have been referring to throughout the evening. There was a comment about a new method being employed here as I've tried to convey the approach that we are discussing at both the, the large and the small scales based on many past actions by city council, including a very specific example that I referenced on Vin Tu Park Road where we, the city council, decreased the density from high to medium density for an approved development project. There was a comment about the process seeming to have gone forward quickly. As I mentioned earlier, the, the report to council was last October. That's the time when you asked us to look at how we might be able to address approximately 20% of that capacity that I've referenced, and that's about 1,000 residential units. That was last October. In January of this year, you initiated this general plan amendment that went to our planning commission in March, and, and here we are tonight. So the process that has been followed has been normal. It's been deliberate. It started essentially last October to lead us to tonight's discussion. There were comments about the accuracy of the numbers that staff has referred to tonight in, both in general and in response to Ms. Wall's letter that was submitted this afternoon. In general, I would, I would say that from my perspective as community development director, we analyze these numbers very, very carefully. We double-check them. We cross-reference them. We literally spent months looking at the numbers, making sure that they were as accurate as they could possibly be, based on past precedent, based on past methods, simply using a geographic information system to deal with the, the city as a whole rather than individual tracts as we have in the past. I'm very confident in the numbers. We have offered to meet with Ms. Wall and, and review the numbers. We, that offer obviously still stands. I and staff have looked at the memo submitted by Ms. Wall this afternoon. There's nothing that I see in those seven points in that memo that would cause me to reconsider the numbers that we have recommended tonight. There are the, without getting into too many details, again, we, we could be in that context comparing what was stated in a past staff report or an EIR or an MND with just a very simple calculation of what is the actual net density for an area, and how does that compare to the general plan land use map? That's how Measure E works, and that's how we analyzed it. The, the data that we used to calculate the 5,400 units and, and then the 1,000 units or 1,088, we placed that spreadsheet and the map that corresponds to it online last October. It still is there today. Anybody can look at it and, and understand how the numbers were derived. So that information's been out as well as an explanation of how we did it. We've left all that online, and it's certainly available. And finally, I would just say that, that in terms of, you know, we've already heard a lot tonight about Measure E and, and, you know, intent of Measure E and how it, how it should or shouldn't work, but all I can say in that context is that, is that staff very carefully has, has studied Measure E, has looked at past precedents. You know, as a professional planner, I started working here at the city four years before Measure E was adopted. I take great pride in my work, in the work of my staff, and we have consistently looked carefully and thoughtfully, conservatively, at how Measure E was written, how it has been implemented, both in the past and looking forward in terms of tonight's item. And I would simply stand behind our analysis, staff's analysis, and be happy to review it with, with any interested party. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Any questions for staff? All right, I'm going to go to, let me have, let me have Ms. Noonan comment, and then we'll go to council questions.
Just a few additional follow-up comments to, to some of the comments received tonight. You know, there, there's just, there's a lot of information that's being put out there regarding what tonight's action actually is, Measure E in general, and also the city's land use actions, policies, and practices. So staff has, I think, Mr. Town and his staff have done a valiant job of trying to explain exactly what is happening tonight to kind of clarify and educate the public on what is actually happening and try to curtail some of that misinformation that's out there. So I'm going to go through a couple of them. Mr. Town has covered some, but I'm going to cover some additional ones. One, one comment was expressed concern over the perception of adding units as high density for the Thousand Oaks Boulevard. You know, it, first of all, this doesn't have anything to do with the Boulevard. This has to do with general plan amendments for existing residential communities. Anything that happens in the Boulevard would be subject to at least three public hearings. So even before a ci, even before a city council can even allocate one of these additional units in the future to any site throughout the city, not just the Boulevard, it would require a pre-application public hearing. It would require full planning staff review and analysis, including environmental analysis. It would require a review by the planning It would require a review by the Planning Commission during a public hearing. And then it would also require a city council public hearing for ultimate decision. But none of that is before the city council tonight. Another suggestion or another commenter tonight opposed the decision tonight indicating that the general plan would be increased from 500 to 5,400 dwelling units. That's not accurate. 5,400 dwelling units are not being considered tonight. What's being considered tonight are seven areas of the city that the general plan would be amended that would result in an additional 1,080 dwelling units for potential future reallocation. One person commented that the decision tonight will result in stripping away or depriving reasonable use of the property without a vote of the people and that this would also deprive people from adding on an additional ADU, you know, assisted living, assisted dwelling unit or granny flat. First of all, this decision tonight does not deprive anyone of the reasonable use of their property. And it's also incorrect that this decision impacts in a person's ability to add an ADU. As previously discussed, state has already mandated that these granny flats be permitted. The city doesn't have any control over that. So regardless of what the density is, every property has a right to build a granny flat on the property under state law. It doesn't count towards Measure E. It's not taken from the bank, and the decisions tonight have no impact on granny flats. With respect to Ms. Wall's letter in the discrepancies in staff report, Mr. Town, you know, indicated that we've reviewed it, and we have reviewed the 34-page analysis. You know, first of all, I think that it's really important to explain that there is a difference between how a project, the different types of regulations that are imposed on a project versus how density is calculated. And I think that's where some of the confusion is coming in. It appears that Ms. Wall is suggesting that the same types of land use regulations on a particular project has to be applied to a general plan density determination, and that's just not accurate. When you have a general plan density, as we've discussed in the past, let's say that you have a piece of property that could have 140 units. Rarely if ever will that project result in 140 units on the property. And that's because the actual land will have other types of topographical constraints, and those are your other regulations. But when you're doing your general plan analysis, it's a very easy calculation. It's net acreage, you know, the net acreage times the density. It's very simple. What it actually is built on the property is something much different and has no relevance to the analysis of what the general plan is. And in fact, I think, I go so far as to say that to add those additional elements or factors would actually be a new or reinterpretation, not only of Measure E, but also of the historical practices by the city on how they determine density under the general plan. One person indicated that Measure E establishes a process and the decision tonight is an end runaround Measure E and requires a vote of the people. I respectfully disagree. The language in Measure E specifically states that general plan amendments that exceed the density in the land use map in 1996 requires a vote of the people. The action here tonight, however, doesn't exceed that baseline. So I disagree with the suggestion that a vote is required. And in fact, to require a vote in this would actually be a new interpretation, not only of the language of Measure E, but also city council adopted policy that goes as far back as written in 2004. Another comment indicated that we're changing the baseline to 81,000 units. That's not accurate tonight. That's not what's before the city council. Also, another comment was that housing laws don't apply to the city of Thousand Oaks. That's also inaccurate. There are over 15 housing bills that were passed by the legislature last year, and the city is subject to each and every one of them. Our next housing element that will be receiving our regional housing needs obligations will be subject to those new laws that are going to be imposed on our city just as it will be on the other cities throughout the state of California. And then I think that's just about it, but I just want to clarify that the decision that's being done or made tonight by the city council is the same exact decision that has been made by the city council nine times since Measure E was adopted. Staff was very, very careful and conservative in ensuring that there was no new interpretation of what the language in Measure E says, nor how that calculation or how that density is done. And to suggest that it is a new interpretation is just erroneous. And that's all my comments.
All right, thank you, Ms. Noonan. All right, council questions. Ms. Bill Delapena.
Thank you. I have a question about Site 4, tract 2561. If you look at the tract map and you see that there is a maximum of 160 dwellings and 118 units were built, so therefore 42 newly created housing units would be added to the bank, why for this particular site were 360 units added and not 42?
The answer is that the estimate of maximum density for Site 4 was based on a comment from the environmental impact report for that project, as noted in your comments. However, the underlying general plan designation for the property is still medium density on our general plan land use map. That was never changed. And so if we look at that site, this is the subject area, Site Number 4. And so this is proposed to be decreased from medium to low density. So despite what was said in the EIR in 1977 about potential number of units, the general plan land use designation today is, as shown here, this is from our land use map, it's still shown as medium density. So again, the analysis that we conducted, the staff conducted, is based on the actual land use map, which is referred to in Measure E. It's not based on a comment in a past document. We are aware of this from Ms. Wall's submitted today. And yet, in looking at this, that comment is not, obviously, I mean, what Measure E is based on. Measure E is based on the land use map of the general plan, the densities that are shown on it, and then operates, as we've discussed, on that net cumulative basis so that we have to keep the overall density below what existed in 1996, or that definitely requires a vote of the people. But in this case, the discrepancy, quote unquote, is between a statement from an EIR in 1977 in terms of the maximum number of potential units. It could have been based on site constraints, which, again, that's not the way that Measure E was written. Measure E was written based on net density and cumulative density over the entire city. So that's the explanation for the difference in how we came up with our numbers. Our numbers are based on what's actually on the map and not a comment in a past document.
Okay, so when the committee met in 2004 and made their recommendations, any subsequent general plan amendments were done in real time, so to speak, correct? I mean, as they were happening, we were transferring the units into the Measure E bank once the bank was officially approved? So that was done in real time, not retroactively?
In terms of being done in real time, so the example that I mentioned on Vinton Park, that was a project that was under construction in 2013. Part of it, the southern part of it, the northern part of it, was actually completed and occupied by residents. So when we noticed those residents about the proposed general plan amendment, we actually fielded questions from some of them and went through the same process in terms of explaining what the general plan amendment was. And in that case, again, from high to medium density. So that's the specific example that's similar to what we're discussing tonight. Other actions that decreased density were several times when we acquired open space. So areas that were shown as residential became open space that decreased density and added units for potential future allocation. Or if a residential category went to a non-residential category, say, you know, high-density residential went to institutional, for instance.
And those were done in real time? They were not done retroactively?
They were done, well, the open space items were based on past actions. They were sort of omnibus actions that looked at multiple areas where we had acquired open space throughout the city in the past and then decreased density based on that and put those units.
And that's how we gained the number of units in the Measure E bank in 2004 and subsequent years?
Starting in 2002. So in 2002--
But the bank wasn't officially approved until later.
Well, the way that, again, that Measure E is written is that it's no net increase in density. So the first decrease was the Western Plateau Preservation Plan in 2002. That action preserved the western plateau that was identified for very low-density residential. It put actually almost 370 units or made them available for future reallocation. That was the first of those nine examples that we've mentioned.
And that's what triggered the formation of the committee to figure out how to do this for the future?
Correct. So the committee that you ran, 2004, I came up with several options, and then those were brought to City Council. City Attorney opined, and then her opinion was brought to City Council, and they voted in 2005 to essentially identify this interpretation of Measure E where it is based on overall density, no net increase.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, hearing done, we're going to close the public hearing and open for discussion and/or motion. Mr. Adam.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Fox. Yeah, just to start the discussion about where this count all came about, if I recall, was way back, maybe a year, maybe longer ago, at a council goal-setting session. And up until that goal-setting session, as we've discussed tonight, this council and prior councils had been approaching this whole business of unused units on a piecemeal basis. And you can tell that by the multiple votes that have been taken. But it was asked by a couple of council members, the council member Price and Bill Delapena, was the issue, just how many of these unused units do we have? And that's when staff was tasked with the task to go out and try to count these unused units. And so here we are today talking about it. Now, you could debate all you like the process by which staff counted these units, but I think no matter what process you used, we'd be still here tonight talking about unused units and how they should be allocated, whether it was 5,400, 54,000. We would have come up with some units, so this debate could not have been avoided. Yeah, I heard a lot of fear tonight from the residents. And fear's a tough thing to combat. But maybe I can try to allay some of the residents' concerns and try to fight that fear with some facts and talk a little bit about housing. Even though tonight's action really doesn't have to do with housing, but that's kind of the elephant in the room. So here's a fact. We're the least densely populated city in all of Ventura County per square mile, the least densely populated. 56 square miles, 40% of it open space. Our neighborhoods have been established for decades. Our open space is protected. And folks, those neighborhoods, those open spaces, those parks, they're untouchable. They're not going to change. They are not going to change, I can assure you. This city is built out. It has been built out for a number of years. There's so little left to build on. There's the Kmart site, which has sat vacant for 15 years now. Shows you how slow things go. There's some blight over by the Oaks Mall, you know, where the Black Angus is and the Armstrongs that could maybe be, something could be built there. There's a few tiny spots on the Boulevard. But all in all, this fear about overdevelopment is just not founded because there's just no room to build it. I mean, one of the speakers talked about the baseline of 81,000, and we actually built 48,000. No, there's absolutely no way 30,000 units could be built in this city, much less the units we're considering tonight. To give you an example, in the last five years, you know how many units have been built in this city? 300. That's 60 units a year. That is infinitesimal. And right now, in the pipeline, you know how many units we have that have been approved to be built? 36 at the Lupe site, another 40 for an apartment complex. We have 129,000 people living in the city, and that's it. That is it. So, and we've had a specific plan for the Boulevard since 2011. That's seven years now. And folks, nothing has been built yet. That's how slow and measured this city is. And as far as, you know, it's been talked about here this evening about the process to even build in this city. It's so rigorous, and we even, we just made it even more rigorous because we added an extra step. So now you have to go through four steps to build anything. And you have to start with the council, then you move back down to the Community Development Department, then you go to the Planning Commission, then you have to go back to the council again. So the process to even get something built is so rigorous because we want to maintain the quality here in the city of Thousand Oaks. I wish some of the, what I hear tonight and the fervor and the efforts could be maybe redirected, some of that energy, to helping some of the people here in Thousand Oaks, our workforce people, our nurses, our cops, our firefighters, our teachers. They need housing here in Thousand Oaks, and they can't afford to live here. I've got some stats from the school district. It's kind of interesting. About 40% of their workforce has to live outside of the city. But the administrators, 90% live in the city, which tells me that we have an affordability problem here in the city of Thousand Oaks, and we need some workforce housing. Now, are we going to get it? The way this city moves so slow, it could be years before that happened. But I think we would all agree that we'd like to see some of the people that help run this city be able to live in the city. And just finally, I'll say, you know, I've lived here for 41 years. That's a long time. I raised two daughters here. My kids went through elementary school, middle school, high school. I was a SOAR board member, Save Open Space and Agricultural Resources, for 10 years. I spent a lot of time, a lot of money because I understand the importance of open space. I understand how important it is to keep our 10 cities separate so we don't have that one giant congested mass. I worked on this for years. But I also understand, and I think SOAR, the SOAR board currently now is coming to understand, that if we're going to do any building, it should be within the city as we can prevent urban and suburban sprawl, which has been the bane of so many other communities. And I think that the city of Thousand Oaks has been, by any measure, extremely cautious, extremely slow, extremely measured in how they look at housing. And I don't see any reason why this, why the council here that I'm on now or any future councils are not going to continue this tradition. This is a family town. It's going to stay a family town. And every member in this council is going to do what they can to preserve our neighborhoods, our open space, our parks, so people can hopefully work here and recreate here and raise a family and live here safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Mr. Price.
Thank you. I just want to add a few comments to what Mr. Adam has already said. First off, I want to thank everybody for coming down here and spending this late-night hour with us. hour with us. I know that there's, there's one thing that we all have in common, no matter what side of the fence you're on here, and I hate it that we have to take sides, but it's the love for the city. I think we all have that. We do. And I, I've heard it in your voices and your comments. You're concerned about the future of this city. And I can assure you that everybody up here is, as well. I also want to acknowledge, over the past several weeks, I've received a couple dozen emails from residents, the majority of which have been in opposition to this proposed action, very few in favor. But I also know that it's easy to sit behind a keyboard and send an email, and it's a lot more difficult to come down here and, and make your comments in public. So again, I appreciate those of you who, who have done that. We talked about it a little bit earlier, that a lot of the emails contained misinformation, and that's unfortunate. We've, staff has done their best. I think that we've done our best to try and set the record straight. Whether you accept the explanations or not is for you to decide. And I think it's important to point out that while our local paper does a great job in reporting things, I think they've done us a disservice, in this case, by sowing the seeds of division. The state of California is facing a housing crisis, and the legislators at the state level have and will continue to put pressures on cities to develop new housing units for all income levels, but in particular, lower income levels. And the state has, contrary to the belief of some, passed legislation that's taken away local control. We've heard about just some of the legislation that was enacted into law within the past year. There are dozens of bills up there in Sacramento right now that are being contemplated that will have additional impacts on cities and eroding local control. Take, for instance, the recently defeated bill that would have, almost by right, without much process at all, allowed eight-story buildings in cities like Thousand Oaks in transportation corridors. Didn't stand a chance, it was killed very early, but that's the kind of thinking that's going on up there, that, that this one-size-fits-all can apply everywhere, and it, it just doesn't. There was talk about our RENA numbers that we'll be getting soon, and I think that most folks believe that our RENA numbers will be significantly higher than what we have seen in the past, perhaps even higher than the amount of units that we would have if this general plan amendment were to go, goes forward. So there's, you know, you, Mr. Adam talked about the past practice of piecemealing things together, and we did that. I specifically remember several of those votes and the open space parcels that we, we added to the bank. And, and I'll acknowledge that that wasn't the right way to do it. It was the only way to do it at the time, because the, the comprehensive analysis had not taken place. And shame on us. It, it's appalling that it took 20-some-odd years for that to take place. I, I don't think there's anybody sitting up here that would disagree with me there. It, it should have been done, but it wasn't. So again, I, I think we have more that draws us together than that that separates us, and I know that everybody wants what's best for the city here, and we all want it to, to grow, but at a, at a rate that the, we can absorb. And I can assure you that, that that's my desire as well. So we, we have the pre-screening process added in there now. There will be many, many opportunities for folks to engage in a public discussion about each and every one of these proposals that were to come before us, if they do. And I encourage you to, to let your voices be heard. I know that most of you who are still here at 10:30 at night will do just that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. McCoy?
When I ran for office in 2015, I was asked if I'd support Measure E, and my understanding of Measure E from reading newspaper clippings and the like is that there was a limited number of housing units in the bank. And I thought, okay, I can do that. And then I read Measure E, and I realized, that's not what it says. It's very clear. The voter approval is required whenever any proposed amendment to the land use element would cause a net increase in the maximum number of residential dwelling units permissible under the proposed residential density ranges, over that shown in the land use element of the general plan, November 5, 1996. I wasn't around then. I didn't do Measure E. I didn't make the law, but I'm required to properly apply it. And it's, to me, it's just very simple, and I'm glad that the assessment's been done. We now see what was in the general plan. We're now moving forward. I was thinking in relation to Catherine Barnett, the, the executive editor of the Santa Rosa Press Democrat, they just won a Pulitzer Prize for a local newspaper, and her comment was that accuracy led us to the Pulitzer. And I, she just said, we don't make the news, we report it. And I think that the application for me is, I didn't make the law, but I'm required to properly apply it. So I think Measure E is very clear, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Ms. Bill, your opinion?
Thank you. I mentioned it, October 24th and January 9th, and I say it again tonight. We have a housing crisis. We need to provide more housing. There is no doubt about that. The one type of housing we really need to supply is affordable housing, low-income housing, low-cost housing. That's really where the pain is, where the lack is, not market-rate housing. And I know that we have representatives here tonight from, from many mansions and the Habitat for Humanity, and I know exactly that those units are needed. Workforce housing is needed. There is no doubt about that. I also heard tonight, and the previous two public hearings we had, that the, that the methodology used for Measure E is accurate. Now, I have no reason to impugn the integrity of our city staff at all. I've known them personally for a long, long time, and so personally, I find really no flaw with the analysis that staff did. I want to be absolutely clear on that. However, when I was on the ad hoc committee in 2004, it was because Measure E was a little vague. I know this is my personal opinion, and my colleagues and the city attorney disagree, but because at that time, staff and council didn't quite know how to interpret it and how to handle these additional units that came out from zoning changes and GP designation changes. So we, as the committee, we had to come up with a formula. Options were given, one formula was recommended. And as I sit here today, 14 years later, there was no way that we thought that we would be sitting here discussing additional 1,080 units or 5,400 units, perhaps in the near, in the far future, not near future. That was not the intent. We had been looking at the designations and the banking, really not retroactively for the most part. So it was done in real time, and therefore, we always believed for 14-plus years that there was a finite number in the Measure E bank. That number changed last year, and due to the new technology, the GIS technology, which wasn't available in 96, and probably could have had a different outcome in counting all of the available units, because, again, GIS was not available. And because of that, and because of the fact that we don't have a rush on the Measure E units at the moment, I think that council has the option to wait. In fact, we have three mixed-use projects in the pipeline. One of those projects, the landowner is here tonight. I've looked very much forward to your project. It looks exciting, and I'd like to see first what those mixed-use units with inclusionary low-income housing units will look like before we go out and put in nearly 1,100 units into a Measure E bank when we don't even know what they will be used for. We have no idea. We don't even know whether they will be used next year or 10 years from now. We just do not know. We have over 500 units, or about 500 units in the bank right now, three projects with several hundred units still waiting to be built. Let's wait for that first. There is absolutely no rush, and council definitely has the option to wait and leave things as they are tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill, your opinion? So I'm going to go to you, Mr. Price, for a motion, but let me just make some comments first. Let me begin by saying that I, like, I think the entire council, I appreciate everybody coming down, regardless of, you know, what your position on this individual issue is. I will say also that from time to time, public hearings like this, they're disappointing from this context. I see speakers come up, and they listen to the staff report, they listen to council questions and comments. We methodically do our best to walk through. We try to respond to the communication that we got from our, our residents and our constituents, both prior to the hearing and during public comment. And there's a sense of confusion, maybe not on the part of everybody, but I see a sense of confusion. It's like, gosh, we really don't know who to believe. And that's disappointing, because five of us are up here doing our level best to be as transparent and straightforward as possible. I would offer these thoughts, maybe to help clarify some things. First, a couple of things that Ms. Bill DePena said. You have to go back to the beginning of how we got here, and it was a very organic process. As I mentioned before, I don't know who the original person was who actually brought up the fact that we never counted. While I wrote Measure E, I, and it's, I could have been the one to say we've never counted. I don't really remember, but it was a goal-setting session. What I do remember was staff got together, and they affirmed we never did a full thorough count in the city, so we decided to count. We had never done that before. Nobody had any idea what the number was going to be. So now I turn to Mr. Town, who's the planning director. And Mr. Town and his staff conducted the analysis. As Ms. Bill DePena pointed out, this council, and I would suggest this community, has absolutely no reason not to have full confidence in Mr. Town and his staff. I've been around a long time, going back to my planning commission days, and our planning staff, even with all the personnel changes, has always done an outstanding job. These are professionals, and I can assure the community, they provide this city their professional best judgment. There's no tinkering, there's no pressure, there's no undue pressure, none of that is occurring. These are 30-year professionals, and when Mr. Town brings a staff report, that's his best judgment. I'm going to say the same thing about our city attorney. There's also been a legal analysis of this issue. Ms. Noonan and her staff have looked at this issue, and people may have some disagreement, but really, no one's come up with any legal challenge of the legal analysis, I'm not going to say interpretation, the legal analysis of what Measure E said. There's no lawsuits being filed here, because folks know that the legal analysis was a good one. So the staff analysis for the count, how we arrived at the number, the legal analysis for what Measure E actually said brought us here today. It brought us to the number, and it brought us to, okay, now what do we do? We've had three public hearings, going back from October, January, and now April. We have been extremely methodical, extremely transparent, and have shared virtually all the information that we have with the public. So the suggestion that somehow we're rushing this through, again, we've been at this since last October. The number that the staff came up with was, I believe, somewhere around 5,400. We had a public hearing. We discussed, what do we do with that number? There was a public comment person that said, you know, that's a little high, I think you guys should take a smaller number, somewhere around 1,000. And as I sat here and council deliberated, that's the number I came up with. I came up with 20%, which, in my view, council's view, was a very reasonable, very conservative number to start with. None of us have any idea where those units are going to go. But you've all heard about the housing needs, you've all heard about that thing, and I don't want to conflate the issue, but my sense is that over the next 10 years, some of those units will probably be built in an infill-type fashion. Where they go, I'm not really sure. We're not building high-rises, we're not building the open space, we're not building in high-density projects in the neighborhood, we're not doing those things. So that's, again, kind of the starting point. I also want to point out, past council actions, that there was some confusion, maybe some political maneuvering, that now the tests have stood the test of time. There's a Lang Ranch detention basin. It's right straight up, what's like Boulevard, Road, what's like Boulevard. When we approved that, there was all kinds of political statements being made that we were destroying habitat, taking out a bunch of oak trees, ruining Thousand Oaks, and didn't need to do that. It was many, many years ago, when we avoided basically a flood situation in the Lang Ranch area. Many of you may not remember, we had a wastewater treatment plant update, upgrade. The statements were made then that we were upgrading our treatment plants, this is back in the 1990s, for future development, that we would develop this city into the San Fernando Valley. It's been 25 years later, and that's clearly not been the case. Bortcha Road, the Bortcha Road that leads into Dos Fiantos, huge political debate because of the grade of Bortcha Road. There were those that said that it was a death trap. There was those that said that we shouldn't be building a road at that type of grade. But really, the underlying reason was, they knew, because they were anti-development, that to bring that road down to a lower grade would have caused a tremendous amount of grading, virtually impossible, it would have been huge environmental lisps packs, and essentially would have killed the Dos Fiantos project. So that was the underlying issue. This council said, no, we approve the road, and Bortcha Road's been a pretty safe road since it's been built. Even the renovation of the Oaks Mall, I can remember a tremendous amount of opposition when we first started talking about the renovation of the Oaks Mall. Nobody mentions it today, but I can certainly remember a lot of people talking about removal of oak trees when we did the renovation of the Oaks Mall. The Kmart Home Depot site at the former Seven Day Adventist, we were told that that was going to change the entire complexion of Newbury Park. That hasn't been the case. Woodridge, the residential development that most people don't even know is in this city, is at the end of Urge Road. It buttresses between Seamy Valley and Thousand Oaks. Most people don't even know it's there. Again, all the claims were made that that was going to somehow ruin Thousand Oaks. And finally, the Western Plateau Plan, which was my proposal to save, I don't know how many hundreds of acres of open space. Most people don't even know where the Western Plateau is. It's ironic that we use the exact same process that we're using tonight to save that open space, and we transferred those units into the Rancho Caneo area and Dos Fiantos. So these are just some of, if you're questioning, hmm, who do I trust? What I would just submit to you, the community, is look at the past history of this city. Look at the decisions that this city has made going all the way back to the early '70s. People can debate, but I would say that the city has a long history of doing what's in best interest of our community and of our residents. We do listen. We all live here, we all raise our families here, nobody wants a lot of traffic, nobody wants to in any way affect our quality of life. That being said, we're faced with a staff report that says, this is the number of units you have, this is what Measure E says, council, what do you want to do? And that's essentially how we got to here tonight. So that's the, that's what's in front of us. And with that, I'm going to give it to Mr. Price for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fox, or Mayor Fox. And with that, I am going to move staff's recommendations to numbers one and two.
Mr. Price moves recommendation one and two. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, prepare the vote, please.
The motion passes 4-1.
The motion passes 4-0, with Councilmember Bill de Pena voting no.
Right, that is approved.
I have an ordinance title to read, it's an ordinance amending municipal code relating to official zoning map and changing zoning classification of four sites, Z 2017-70622, and the applicant is City of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. We're gonna move to Department Report 9A, that's the cannabis tax measure. And Ms. Ortado, are you gonna provide that staff report?
Yeah, just an announcement, if anybody is staying for the sustainability plan for municipal operations, we're gonna continue that item because of the late hour to a future council meeting. So that item will not be held tonight, so if you're sticking around for it, you call it an early night, so to speak, you can go home for that.
Okay. All right. Before we move to item 9A, can we, can we get a motion to go past 11 o'clock? Thank you.
I'll move to move past 11 o'clock.
All right. Vote, please.
The motion passes 5-0.
All right. 9A, Ms. Ortado, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and council members. I'm here tonight alongside Dave McPherson with HDL Companies and John Adams, Finance Director, and we're here to discuss a potential cannabis tax measure for the November 2018 general election ballot. Tonight, we're not be asking you to approve any ballot measure or ordinance, but are seeking direction. Based on your input tonight, staff will introduce an ordinance and ballot measure in June. As you're well aware, city council has been working on the cannabis topic since 2015. After nearly a year of research and public engagement, the city adopted an ordinance last November to allow for one medical cannabis retailer and one cannabis testing lab in the city with certain restrictions. In December, the application and selection process were approved. During the December meeting, city council asked staff to research a possible tax measure for cannabis and return with this information. As we initially approached the topic of taxing cannabis, several questions were raised. Should this be a general or special tax? What cannabis business activities should be included in a tax measure? What methods and rates should be applied? What are other local cities doing? And what financial impact will the tax have on the city? There are two options to select from when approaching the type of tax to place on the ballot. A general tax provides city council discretion in how the funds are spent. It requires a four-fifths vote of the city council and a majority vote on the ballot. I would be remiss not to mention that there is a ballot initiative gathering traction that, if approved by voters, would require all general tax measures to receive a two-thirds vote in the election to pass. If this ballot initiative is approved by voters, it would apply to all tax measures placed in 2018. The other option is a special tax, which limits how funds might be spent. It requires a majority vote by city council and a two-thirds vote on the ballot. Staff is recommending a general tax. We would anticipate that the tax being collected is part of the city's business tax collection process. Business tax is considered a general tax. So, the future of the cannabis industry in Thousand Oaks is unknown. There's always a possibility that in 20 to 30 years from now, the business activities permitted will have expanded. Rather than place additional ballot measures each time a new business activity is added, staff is recommending that, should a tax measure be placed on the ballot this year, that it encompass all cannabis business activities licensed by the state. In addition to the flexibility for the future, it supplements criminal prosecution by monetarily penalizing illegal activity. In evaluating how much the tax rate should be, there are several factors that should be considered. The goal is to raise revenue to provide services to the community, but if the tax is too high, it may drive consumers into the illegal marketplace. There are cities who initially adopted higher tax rates and are now lowering them to help the businesses be sustainable. The state is also looking into temporarily lowering the 15% excise tax. Another consideration is that the assorted cannabis business activities have varying profit margins and should not be taxed at the same rate. There is the ability to add flexibility to the tax by establishing a maximum tax rate. City council would have the opportunity to make periodic adjustments to the tax. They may charge no tax, or you may charge up to the maximum rates. Typically, by the time the product has reached the consumer, it has been taxed at several different levels in the supply chain. The total cumulative tax that is considered tolerable before consumers might turn to the illegal marketplace is 30%. This worksheet provides an overview of how cannabis is taxed through the supply chain. In this scenario, the tax is set at the maximum tax rates that will be displayed on the next slide. Using these figures, the cumulative tax rate is just under that 30% mark. These are the tax rates that staff is recommending for a ballot measure. Voters would vote on the maximum rates, but staff recommends implementing at the initial rates listed here. The rates were developed, taking into consideration all of the factors mentioned earlier. The only city in the county with a tax measure in place is Fillmore, however, they have banned all commercial cannabis activity. They included two measures, one for retail and another for cultivation. The retail measure passed by 63.9% and cultivation by 59.3%. Port Wineemi has not approached voters with a tax measure, but are instead negotiating a monetary exchange for community benefit in their agreements with the cannabis businesses. Dependent on many factors, a medical dispensary is estimated to earn gross receipts of $1 to $3 million. Based on those figures, this table provides the amounts the city may potentially collect. Also provided in the table is the tax amount the businesses would pay under the existing business tax structure. And this is the same information based on the estimated gross receipts for a testing facility and their corresponding tax rates. Many voters currently have a legalize it and tax it sentiment. Last November, there were seven cannabis tax measures in California, six of the seven passed with over two-thirds voter approval. The other passed, but was just shy of the two-thirds vote. We can't be certain that voters will have the same feelings toward cannabis the next time around. It also provides an established means of taxation as the industry develops. City clerk must submit ballot measures to the county by July 3rd. Should city council desire to place a tax measure on the ballot, staff would return in June to introduce an ordinance and ballot measure. The measure would appear on the November 6 ballot. If approved by voters, tax would be effective January 1st of 2019. Staff recommends returning in June to introduce the tax measure and ordinance. We are recommending a general tax that will be used as part of the city's business tax program. We recommend that the measure include all cannabis business activities that are permitted by the state, and that the tax measure include maximum tax rates for the various business activities, and provide flexibility for city council to decrease or increase the tax as deemed appropriate up to the maximum rates. And we are available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ortado. Questions for staff? Ms. Bill de Pena?
I didn't push the button, but actually, I was, I'm ready to make a motion.
Do we have any speaker cards in this side?
Okay.
Hearing done, go ahead.
Okay, then I will move staff approval.
All right. Ms. Bill de Pena moves the staff recommendation, discussion under motion. All right, seeing none, prepare the vote, please. You know, I do have a question, though. The staff recommendation, they kinda gave us some options here. So, general tax, special tax?
General tax.
General tax?
Yeah.
I'm looking at the handout here, so what's the, hold on. Could you remove the vote for a second, Ms. Rodriguez? Let me go back to the staff report.
Yeah, we're recommending a general tax that include all the state-permitted cannabis activities, and that the tax rates contain a maximum tax rate, so that it provides flexibility to city council.
Correct.
So those are the three recommended items that we'd like to bring back in June.
Yes.
Okay. So, is that clear?
That's clear.
Okay, all right. All right, go ahead, Ms. Rodriguez, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Item 9B has already been continued, to a further date. We'll go to city manager, any follow-up items?
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Just an announcement that our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is next Tuesday, the 1st of May will be our annual goals session, and it will take place at the Grand Arboretum Hall Library, Marvin E. Smith Community Room, same location as last year, and for those that aren't able to make it, we will be broadcasting that meeting live via some new technology that we have through TOTV. So, that will be available through our traditional stream, online, or on TOTV and television. That's it for my update.
Thank you. Mr. Powers, Ms. Noonan, we have a closed session item.
Yes, we have two closed session matters. First one is conference with real property negotiators, properties at 1205 Lawrence Drive in Thousand Oaks. Negotiating on behalf of the city is Helen Cox, Sustainability Division Manager, Jay Spurgeon, Director of Public Works, and for the property owners, City of Thousand Oaks. Negotiating on behalf of Bright Canyon Energy is Anthony Marassa, Consultant in Bright Canyon Energy, One Arizona Center, 400 East Van Buren Street in Phoenix, Arizona. Negotiating on behalf of Able Grid Energy Solutions, Barnaby Olson, Principal, Able Grid Energy Solution on Teasdale Avenue in Studio City, California. Under negotiation include price and terms pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. And the final conference, final closed session, is conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, D2 and E1. It is unlikely I'll have anything to report following this closed session.
All right, thank you, Ms. Noonan. And with that, we will be adjourned to our council goal-setting session for May 1st, 2018. Have a great week.